Hello, everyone, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. Now I would like to call this meeting to order. I would like to welcome the public, my fellow council members, the media, and anyone else who is joining us in person electronically for this committee of the whole. I am Sam Brandhorst, Athelwold Councilor. I'll be your chair for today. Today's agenda lists all the items before committee for consideration. The recommendations, motions on today's agenda are shown in boldface. It is important to note that any motion made at this meeting is not final until the council meeting of October 21st, 2025, at which time the council may approve, amend, defer, or otherwise change the motion made by this committee. Copies of the agenda have been posted on our website. This meeting is being livestreamed, and any participation in the meeting proceedings will become part of the public record. The recording from this livestream will be... I'm sorry. This meeting, this recording from the meeting will be livestreamed on the county's website and can be viewed by selecting livestream meetings on the bottom right of the county's homepage at thecounty.ca. Under Agenda Item 5, I will be asking for comments from the audience on any item listed on the agenda. Today, we have one registered comment from the committee. If anyone present would like to speak at this section of the agenda, present at this meeting, you are welcome to do so. You will have three minutes. I will remind that if you participate, your name will be included in the committee minutes for, and form part of the public record and posted on to the county's website. I want to remind everyone that we made different opinions, but it is important to remind, to remain respectful of each other. For those in attendance, please refrain from clapping in the council chambers as it does not add to the discussion and it is a contravention of the procedural bylaw. In the event of a fire, please use the applicable two fire exits in Shire Hall or wherever you are tuning in from. For those in Shire Hall council chambers, please mute and limit your use of cell phones. And now, can I please get a motion to confirm the agenda? Counselor Prinsen, Counselor St. Jean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Prinsen, St. Jean motion that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting of October 9th, 2025 be confirmed.
All in favor? That carries. And moving to disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing none, let's go to Section 4, Deputations. Stephen Burr from South Shore Joint Initiative and Royal Astronomical Society of Canada to address committee regarding Dark Sky Designation Proposal for the South Shore of Prince Edward County. Hi, Stephen.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Burr, and I'm here on behalf of the South Shore Joint Initiative and the Royal Astronomical Society of Canada in seeking municipal support for a Dark Sky Preserve designation on the south shore of the county. Holding this upright. So what is a Dark Sky Preserve? Dark Sky preserves are protected areas that make a special commitment to protect and preserve the night, reducing or eliminating light pollution in all forms. What is light pollution? Light pollution is the combined effects of glare, light trespass, and skyglow, which adversely affects the flora and fauna, as well as denying humanity's cultural heritage or access to the stars. Founded in 1868, the Royal Astronomical Society of Canada is Canada's leading astronomy organization, bringing together over 5,000 enthusiastic amateurs, educators, and professional astronomers. In addition to the many national services, our 30 centers offer local programs across Canada. The Royal Astronomical Society of Canada designates dark sky sites to recognize and protect areas with exceptional night sky conditions for astronomical observation and appreciation. Now, there's three designations: the Dark Sky Preserve, the Nocturnal Preserve, and the Urban Star Park. Principal requirements of a DSP: compliance with the Royal Astronomical Society of Canada Guidelines for Outdoor Lighting, accessibility, quality of the night sky, and an outreach program. Loss of darkness. In accordance with a recent study, there's been a 7% to 10% annual increase in sky brightness over the past 12 years. This loss of direct contact with the natural sky is a further support by the population concentrations in Canada. As Statistics Canada reports, in 2021, nearly 3 in 4 Canadians, 73%, lived in one of Canada's large urban centers. Impact of light pollution. Plants are affected by color and duration of lighting. Artificial lighting also affects the biological rhythm in animals and thus modifying their behavioral patterns. Eliminated shorelines impact fish and aquatic plants. Urban sources of artificial lighting at night, ALAN, broadly affect avian migratory behavior and may have a role in shaping migratory routes of individual species. How do we rate the loss of darkness on the night sky? We use the Bortle Scale. From the left, 1 is a dark sky site, excellent dark sky, and on the left, number 8 is inner-city or urban. So where are we in Prince Edward County? In 2016, satellite data indicated the south shore of Prince Edward County was Bortle Class 2, a typical dark sky site. More recent data of 2022 indicates the south shore has dropped to a Bortle Class 3 sky, a rural sky. To protect the biodiversity of the region, the Dark Sky Preserve will encompass the entire key biodiversity area, KBA. However, this will be broken down into two zones: a buffer zone, south Marysburg and Athelwards, north of Army Reserve and Babylon Roads, and a core zone, south Marysburg and Athelwards, south of Army Reserve and Babylon Road. So the south shore, so the importance of the south shore. The south shore is a key biodiversity area and should be protected. The south shore of Prince Edward County is a critical avian and myotis migratory pathway. The south shore is home to various plants, amphibians, and reptiles. The south shore is also the last undeveloped area on the north coast of Lake Ontario. Why a Dark Sky Preserve? Number 1, ecological benefits. Protects wildlife, reduces disruption for migratory birds, aquatic life, preserves natural circadian rhythms for plants and animals. Number 2, cultural and natural heritage. The night sky is part of our heritage, and preserving it ensures future generations can experience the stars. It revives traditions tied to the stars, including indigenous storytelling, offers astronomy education, and encourages youth engagement in nature and science and STEM learning. Number 3, fosters community pride and community engagement, builds a sense of stewardship and identity around conservation, encourages local involvement and education, and opportunities for schools, museums, tourism board, etc., to collaborate, potential for annual events like the South Shore Dark Sky Festival. And number 4, aligns with sustainability goals, promotes energy-efficient lighting, and environmental responsibility, supports a broader climate and biodiversity initiatives. So how can municipal government lead? By adopting light pollution bylaws, retrofitting municipal lighting as part of their life cycle management, provide a letter of support to the South Shore Joint Initiative and the Royal Astronomical Society of Canada, and provide a MOU with the SSJI and the RASC to allow for astronomy events at Mariners Park Museum and designate the park as a night sky viewing area for the public. So we're not the first municipality to think about this. The North Frontenac Dark Sky Preserve has already done this. They were one of the first municipalities in Canada to achieve the Dark Sky Preserve status. So in 2023, the South Shore Joint Initiative sent out a survey to its over 1,000 members, and when asked, "Would you support a Dark Sky Preserve designation for the south shore of Prince Edward County?", 93% who responded stated yes. I've also provided to council letters of support from Nature Canada, Prince Edward County Field Naturalists, the Prince Edward Point Observatory, and the Quinte Field Naturalists. In summary, loss of darkness: 7% to 10% annual increase in sky brightness over the past 12 years, resulting in a loss of direct contact with the natural sky. Light pollution affects plants, animals, and humanity. The Dark Sky Preserve provides environmental protection, cultural enrichment, educational opportunities, and community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Stephen. And I will just ask, is there any questions from committee? Counselor Roberts, Counselor McNaughton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephen, thank you. That was a really good presentation. I realize that you provided us with a lot more information in our package, but I think you hit all the highlights. For those of folks that don't know what myotis are, you're talking about bats, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Little ears and big ears and just bats, yeah. If I understood correctly, what you're asking for today is an amendment to the motion to receive to add that council supports a community benefit approach. Is that correct?
Sorry, what was the last part?
What is your actual ask today?
My actual ask for today was that the community or the council would look at adopting light pollution bylaw, would investigate that at least. And as part of that would be in the retrofitting of their municipal lighting in the future and their life cycle management of the lights, they would incorporate dark sky lighting as opposed to the bright white blinding lighting. And provide a letter of support for the SSJI and the RASC for Dark Sky Preserve, because we need that to take that to our national office, and an MOU that allows us to use the Mariners Park Museum as a dark sky observing site.
So Stephen, I'll get the ball rolling a little bit by, when the time comes, Madam Chair, I would like to move an amending motion or additional aspect of the existing motion to receive to include that letter of support, and there may be other counselors who would like to add on to that. But then I would like the opportunity to speak to it as well, or should I do that now?
Let's wait until the motion's on the floor.
Okay.
Great, perfect, thank you. Your microphone. And... Yeah. And I think there is somebody else, because I know Counselor Hirsch already sent forward a motion, so there might be a couple people looking for, to support this, but that's great. Counselor McNaughton?
Yeah, and I don't have to, because there's always, already lots of counselors in line. I'll just be grateful for that. This has been very interesting. It's come up several times, particularly talking to young people during some environmental consultation. And one teenager, who's a recent grad of PECI, was planning on doing what you're doing here today and bringing it forward to the, bringing this forward to us. He just needed to get some research done in advance. So this is, so I haven't let him know yet, but I'll be forwarding the YouTube. He'll be thrilled. But one of the things he wanted to see was amendments to our official plan to change the language that is, and I did look it up, on page 63 regarding, there's some language that says, "The county shall support efforts to mitigate light pollution by ensuring that exterior lighting is properly shielded, etc., etc., etc." And his thought was, "A dark sky policy for urban areas could be guided by existing recommendations that I think come from your organization." And I just wondered, so his, his hope was that that language would become "shall", not that the municipality shall support, but that development shall do this, that the municipality shall require. So I just wondered if you had any thoughts about the urban guidelines that are, that govern sort of recommended lumen settings, recommended types of shading, etc., if there's anything that you would like to comment on as far as what is most critical for urban wildlife and urban areas?
So I'm just kind of firmly laid out to answer this. The, when we're looking at a, a light pollution bylaw, it is hoped that they would follow the RASC guidelines. You know, as we, you know, get rid of the older lights, remove the newer lights, we get shielded, and the amber colored lights, and that would slowly, over time, affect the night sky and bring back a portion of darkness. So this project is like a 10-year timeline here to get back to a dark sky designation of 2. So it's not something I think is going to happen overnight. So, but as part of the project would be the county adopting light pollution bylaws that agree with the RASC CGOs. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it does. And I think that idea of that timeline, looking at it as a larger project to create overall gradual improvement, I presume would continue on long after the sort of south shore achieves its goals, but could impact the entire municipality ongoing and create increased improvements throughout time.
Yeah, so as part of this program, we're looking at the new Monarch Conservation Reserve. So we're looking at that for a sky view site. We have somebody on, on the committee there. And so hopefully, you know, by the time that that gets done, that's 10 years probably down the road too. So, so that's our goal, and by that time, hopefully, we've dimmed the sky enough that we're back to Bortle 2, and we can get the Dark Sky Preserve designation.
Thanks very much, and thank you to the movers, whoever ends up moving this motion. I think it's a good idea.
Great. Okay, moving on to Counselor Nyman, then Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thanks for this. So you said in the last five years that the south shore went from a Class 2 to a Class 3.
That's right.
So, and what's the reason for that, and where'd that data come from?
Okay, so that's satellite data you can get yourself off, off the Google. Just Google dark, dark sky sites, I think is one of the many light pollution sites. And so you can get the latest data off that. I started looking at this project quite some time ago, so I have data back from 2016, so.
Okay, so, and what's the reason?
Well, it's encroaching, so we're getting more developments, and we're also going to LED lighting. So LED lighting, white, very bright, is, is much worse than the old lamps. And of course, we're getting more development in Prince Edward County now too. So that's with also the added street lighting and everything. So that's what's causing the...
Okay, can I have a quick follow-up? So I guess we've just put new streetlights in within the last four years. So, and I'm pretty sure, and I don't know this for a fact, but I'm sure that the life expectancy of those is 20 years or 25 years. So to change that, change out those lights for new lights, I don't think would be prudent on council's part to spend that kind of money for that. But the other part is, you said that you had 93% respondents say they agree with what you're proposing, but how many responded? What's the number of respondents?
I can't remember off the top of my head. That, I was back, how many years ago was that now? I, two years ago, yeah. I have a great memory, but it's relatively short.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Nyman, Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And we'll, we'll get some order to this motion business shortly. Steve, I just wanted to thank you for doing this and to say that I didn't know much at all about dark sky until as a concept, probably until meeting you a couple of years ago, when you've been, you've been very active, putting on programs at the library and elsewhere, raising consciousness about dark sky. But I had a true appreciation for that in the last two weeks. I was on a voyage to the High Arctic. And at night in the High Arctic, other than the lights on our, on our vessel, there is no other light other than the sky, and it is remarkable what you can see, especially the northern lights, but that's not what this is about. But no, it truly is an important thing to try to do this, and I think that there's a number of steps, a number of things to consider. As Counselor Nyman said, we've just replaced most of the, most of the street lighting. If I recall correctly, and again, this needs to be looked into, we required them to be downward facing and, and sort of dark sky compliant. So we may already be some way to meeting the requirements for this that would need to be, that would need to be looked into. The, when we get to this point, the, I just could be making a motion to have staff do an investigation and come back to us with what steps they see would be necessary to, to pursue this. But if I might, Madam Chair, we do have, this is one of these odd situations. We have a registered comment from the audience, which we wouldn't normally get to until Item 5 on the agenda. So with, with council's indulgence, I would make a motion that the registered comment from the audience on this item be permitted to address the committee at this point before we entertain motions on the, on this item. If I could have a second for that? Counselor Roberts?
Okay, excellent. Counselor Roberts, hand beat you, sorry, Mr. Mayor, on the seconding. So, but I will... At first, we have three hands up before we, actually, Clark? If the motion goes on the floor before other comments, do I do the motion first, as it's now on the floor, and then do comments after the fact, the second, since the deputation is still in following? Or what do you think procedurally?
Well, the motion's on the floor now.
Yeah.
If you pass it, you will be permitting the comment from the audience for three minutes, and then you can go back to your comments.
Okay, I'm good with that. So my current list will stay as my top list, so whoever, so Mr. Mayor is next on my list, so he will become next comment after the vote is taken. So let's do the vote now based on accepting the comments or allowing Cheryl Anderson to speak, because her comment is directly about this current topic, and she's providing more information. Counselor Harrison?
Why don't we hear the comments and then do the motion after?
Yeah, we have to call the vote now.
That's all that is.
Yeah, that's all that is.
Okay.
Okay, call a vote. All in favor? That carries? Excellent. Okay, Cheryl, your three minutes. Just say your name into the mic.
Good afternoon, I'm Cheryl Anderson. I'm here on behalf of the South Shore Joint Initiative. At SSJI, our vision is a permanently protected Prince Edward County south shore, where together biodiversity and people thrive. We educate and advocate for the protection, preservation, and restoration of south shore lands and waters. The Dark Sky Designation helps protect and conserve the biodiversity of the south shore. Daily periods of light and dark are required to maintain the health of all living things. Millions of birds and bats migrate through the south shore at night. They are disoriented by light, as evidenced by the massive kill-off of migrating birds at the Lennox Addington Power Station in 1981, due to the attraction of the floodlights on the smokestacks, which were fortunately eventually turned off. The Dark Sky Preserve Designation creates a unique and important additional use of Mariners Park. Local garden club leaders have expressed an interest in designing a dark sky garden, replete with night-blooming flowers, and a sitting area for people to enjoy and marvel at the night sky. The local RASC group has diligently followed all requirements for education and outreach required to receive, to achieve the designation. Local environmental groups have provided their support. The proposal to create a dark sky-protected area in the south shore of Prince Edward County is an important initiative. The area will encompass parts of south Marysburg and Athelwards, as demonstrated in Steve's presentation. The Royal Astronomy Astronomical Society of Canada designates Dark Sky Preserves and has published clear requirements. South Shore Joint Initiative urges you to move forward with the requirements for this important project in the south shore. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Cheryl. And Stephen, would you like to come back up to Mike? We'll just have both of you up here for any future questions as this is becoming a bit of a relay. Mayor Ferguson, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Steve. Most of my questions have been answered, but it was great talking to you at the Milford Fair about this, and I'm a big supporter of this idea. In terms of the Mariners Park itself, do the residential houses present any kind of problem?
I don't think so. We had met with the neighbors immediately to the south of the museum, and I think we've kind of qualmed any concerns they had, so I don't think there's a negative impact at all.
Oh, so the lights, there are six or seven houses just
Yeah.
very close by, so they won't present any kind of problem?
Not unless they light it up like Las Vegas, but so far, so good.
Okay, yeah, I'm really looking forward to this coming to fruition and fully support it. So thanks very much for coming today.
Microphone. Counselor Pennell?
Yeah, I believe we already have one area designated as a dark area just to the east of us.
Yes, the, I had talked about in my presentation about the North Frontenac Dark Sky Preserve.
The reason why I asked that, they are telling me since they've got that, it's just tremendous, the people that are going to see this. But the biggest problem is, they're all driving because it's dark with their lights on, and there's some real concern, are we gaining or losing by declaring an area that? Further to that, the other thought that comes to mind, as a municipality, we've been looking at trying to discourage rural lots. We used to be able to get two, we're down to one now. But should we be encouraging more rural lots and less town to try to keep down the ...? I've lived in the same area for 75 years, and I don't have a problem with light protection. I've lived in the same area for 75 years, and I don't have a problem with light protection, even though there's houses around me. So I'm just wondering, are we as a municipality heading down the wrong route by trying to encourage more urbanization rather than individual houses in the rural area?
Yeah, for me to answer, that's not my expertise in that area, so I wouldn't have an answer to you. I mean, concern is lighting. You can have more development, but if you have the appropriate lighting, well, then you preserve the dark sky. I don't know if that answers your question.
Any, any thought to all the driving up vehicles in the nighttime in an area that you're trying to protect the darkness?
I don't perceive... They have quite a program up in the North Frontenac area, and they have a designated site that's a pad, and they have all the facilities, and they carry out regular programming. So that's designed for that. Our proposal is not to that magnitude, though we do want to have an outreach program at the location.
I just offer for what it's worth because the people in that area say that the night light is actually far greater than it ever was since there's so many people going to view it.
Thank you, Councillor Pennell. Councillor St. Jean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your presentation. Certainly is a novel, novel idea. I do have a couple of hesitations, so a couple of questions because of that. The first one is, well, first I'll start with my comment. I don't believe the amount of development that's occurred in the South Shore is what's causing the difference in the night sky. There just hasn't been that much out there. In fact, it's negligible, one or two houses over the last five, 10 years. So that's just my, my starting statement. What I'm more concerned about is when we get requests for new bylaws. New bylaws that restrict the rights of property owners, restrict the rights of residents. So I'm, I'd really like to know in greater detail what, what a, what a light bylaw is going to do for private property rights, people that actually live in this area already. So do you have any, anything that you can help me to understand what those impacts are going to be?
Off the top of my head, there's other municipalities, we're not the only municipality that's thinking about this, right? So other municipalities have done it. It's not, it's not telling the owner he can't have lighting. That is not what a bylaw does. It just outlines what is acceptable today for lighting. You still have lighting for security, you still have lighting for safety. It doesn't impact that at all. So instead of a bright LED white light, you have an amber colored LED light. You have a full shielded instead of a, a light bulb that's shining in every direction. I mean, I think that's a very, a minimal impact on the residents to save the South Shore. I mean, you know, you change your light bulb. I mean, is that a hard, you change your fixture? You put on motion detectors? I mean, I don't think that's too serious at all.
Okay, that's my second part of my, just a follow up. I don't disagree with you, changing light bulbs is the right thing to do and changing direction, so it's not a, not offensive to, to neighbors. You know, we deal with that all the time. What I struggle with is creating more bylaws that are extremely difficult to enforce. We've seen, you know, we, we've seen that in a few occasions. I'm going to name the first one that comes to mind, and that's the anti-idling bylaw. It's near to impossible to enforce something like that. So I'm wondering, I'm still struggling with what is going to be the impact beyond having to change a few light bulbs in restrictions to not only the residents that are there, but the, the use of people who don't just live there. You know, the South Shore Monarch Preserve is for everybody. It's for everybody's use. And so I'm having difficulty being able to support this on the outset because I don't have all the answers. I don't have all of the data. And some of the data, like I say, the, your satellite mapping, I believe it's accurate. I believe satellites. But I don't know if it's necessarily a development issue down there because there has been none. So until I can get some answers as to what is the impact going to be on, on current residents and the current uses there, whether it's hunting, fishing, recreational uses, as well as the residents, I'm having difficulty at this point. Doesn't mean I'm against it. I just have a lot of questions that need to be answered, and I'm not sure I'm getting them today. Just have to be totally honest.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
So I'm, I'm not saying no development along the South Shore. I don't think anywhere have I ever said that. In fact, when I talked to the other councillor, reference development, I said it was the lighting, not particularly the development if I, unless I misquoted myself. But it's, it's, you know, appropriate lighting. That's, you know, you can build a big, you know, big building, but, you know, you have appropriate lighting on. It's not against development or usage. It doesn't, just because it's a dark sky site doesn't mean, you know, people can't use the area. That's not what it is about.
No, and I, and I understand that. But like I say, I have reservations whenever we start writing bylaws that restrict people's private property rights. End of story.
Yeah, and again, this is like a 10-year project, so, you know, it's not going to happen overnight, and, you know, you discover as you go, as you develop it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hirsch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I mean, fully agree with Councillor St. Jean and Councillor Nyman, there are questions that need to be answered, which is why I think the, the motion I want to put forward is to have this looked into so there are more answers, so that we know what we're ultimately potentially agreeing to. Yeah, well, yeah. Councillor Roberts' motion, but should we receive the comments from the, from the audience as a, as a technical matter? Kirk is... Yes, so I would move that we receive the comments from the...
We haven't asked the public.
Just, just on this one? Cheryl Anderson's comment?
Yeah. Madam Chair, yes, there, there needs to be a motion to receive the deputation and a motion to receive the comment from the audience, or you can roll them into one motion, but that, that needs to take place before any other motions.
Okay, let's roll them together into one motion before we start putting any motions on the floor, because I believe Councillor Roberts had his hand up first and put his intent, and then we'll move on to Councillor Hirsch, and maybe Councillor Hirsch's motion will be tied into Councillor Roberts, who knows? But let's put this on the floor. Councillor McNaughton and Councillor Roberts?
Thank you. So this rolls both in, so this is the, sorry, was it Councillor Roberts was the second? Sorry? McNaughton Roberts' motion that the deputation by Stephen Burr South Shore Joint Initiative and Royal Astronomical Society of Canada regarding a dark sky designation proposal for the South Shore of Prince Edward County be received and that the comments, that the comment from Cheryl Anderson from the audience be received.
Okay, perfect. That's on the floor. Councillor Harrison, sorry, I missed your question in the first round.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Are we voting on it right now? Or I believe he had one more question on this motion specifically? On the motion to receive and not going into Councillor Roberts?
First, first off, I'd like to say there's a gentleman back there had his hand up that did not speak.
Right.
Yet. And so his comments have not been heard.
This is just Cheryl's comment that is being received.
Pardon?
Just the one comment is being received. We can still have comments.
But yes, I just want to make sure that's done before we move on, that we have all the comments before we vote on this, because I don't think we should receive them till we have them all.
Kate?
Fairness, if there's other people in the audience who want to speak on this issue, in fairness, you should allow them to speak first.
Perfect, thank you. Would you like your time to speak on this subject? And just state your name into the microphone, and you have three minutes.
My name is Mark Edwards, and just in listening today, Councillor Nyman had a concern about the cost of replacing the light bulbs there. If there's light bulbs we've just put in that are good for 20 years, I can't see why there'd be any great deal in taking those lights out, putting them in storage, and then we need them again, reusing them. So it's basically the cost of putting the light bulbs in that are required for, for this process. I don't think there should be a real concern with the cost of light bulbs. Yes, thank you.
Sorry, just wait, council has a question for you. Councillor Nyman?
Yeah, I guess, and I'm not 100% sure how the lights work, but, and maybe I can ask Adam. Like, I think it's not just a light bulb, but I think you have to replace the whole light assembly, I believe, but maybe Adam can explain that whole process, if he can.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the question is, the LED lights, they're, they're an assembly, so they're all one piece, and they do make them in different color and temperature and intensity. So there would be cost involved with swapping them out with other ones, even if we did place the ones we have in storage. So I, I would say that there, there would be a cost to put different ones in.
But, but is it the light bulb, or it's the whole assembly, is it not? I don't know.
Sorry, it is the, the assembly, the array, the whole piece.
Okay, perfect for that clarification. Councillor Harrison?
Yes, I'll carry on. I'm, I've kind of lost grip of where I'm supposed to speak here, but I, I'll speak in regard to the, the motion, I guess, or the potential motion. Myself, I'm not in favor of this at all because it looks to me like another overlay on our planning documents, the same as some of these corridors, et cetera. And we do not need any more bylaws and overlays on our rural severances particularly. One major difference, I've lived here all my life, the South Shore seems as dark to me as it ever was, if not darker. And that land out there now, if you look at that map, is over half owned by conservation groups, which means that there will not be adverse lighting on those lands. So the save, I don't know what we're saving out there in, in the respective light, because I've navigated that area, et cetera, it's the same for years. And probably historically, if you look at the number of shipwrecks out there, they would have liked a few more lights. So I don't know why we just don't, why we keep perhaps making unnecessary rules for that all they do is create complications, and therefore I will not support it.
Perfect. Thank you, Councillor Hirsch. We are now going to go on to Councillor, no, we, oh, we have to receive it. So all in favor, sorry, Clerk?
I was just going to say, Madam Chair, that the motion to receive the deputation and the comment from the audience, I'm sure a friendly amendment to comments from the audience would be accepted.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. Let's vote, all in favor? This is just receiving for clarification. Perfect, that passes. Councillor Robert, where do you?
In the spirit of some of our online experiences in the past, there is in fact a conspiracy, and that is that Councillor Hirsch and I are conspiring on a motion. And the motion reads that staff be directed to explore opportunities to support a dark sky preserve and report back with recommendations for the steps and actions required. And if I could have an opportunity to...
Yes, this is the time, thank you.
...speak to it, yes. Thank, thank you. Where's Stephen? There, Stephen. Stephen, in this, for me, everything you said is great, so I won't repeat how great it is. But in this particular moment of enormous economic disruption and dramatic economic uncertainty, to some extent, you buried the lead, in my view. The platinum standard for sustainable development is something, an entity which we can all look up or Google, called the Global Sustainable Tourism Council. And they are 100% behind what you're talking about from the podium. But they spend a lot more time on the economic benefit than you did this afternoon. And they, they really insist on the benefits, the economic benefits that accrue to rural areas and rural communities. They have a fancier name for it, astrotourism or something like that. But it is all about getting people outdoors in nature-based tourism, which I really support and I think makes a lot of sense. And they also point to, and they're not alone, point to the growing market for such tourism, nature-focused tourism, astrotourism, and the benefits it has had for small and rural communities in terms of economic diversification, which is a oral meme that we parade out but maybe don't do enough about in this community. It also provides organizations with, like our, you know, visit PEC or stay PEC with another marketing tool, which I think is pretty cool, really. So things like dark day festivals, all of those things expand the tourism season, they diversify the economic benefit of tourism, they add to the local economy, and that's a really good reason to support this as well. And you're right, we're not the first ones. You mentioned North Frontenac, but other places have actually dug a little deeper into the economic benefits for rural communities, surprisingly. Jasper Alberta has done that. The University of Alberta actually did a big study on astrotourism, what you're talking about in terms of economic diversification. States like Oregon and Colorado have used quotes like what you're talking about, and said, quote, "elevates the destination experience in our communities." That's pretty good. And, you know, notwithstanding some of the extremism that's happening south to the south of us, the National Park Service in the US still says and repeats over and over again that night sky opportunities like you've talked about provide real economic value and increase the local spend in rural America, and I would assume for rural Canada as well. So I really support this, and I hope that the motion passes, and thank you for being here. I'm probably the only one that hasn't met you before, but I really appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Councillor, thank you, Councillor Roberts. Councillor Hirsch? Nope, you're good, great. Councillor Maynard?
Thank you. I just, on these, on our new LED streetlights, I'm just going to weigh in because they, they were installed in Consecon and dramatically less, less light than, than, than the old lights. I mean, I, on a regular basis, go out and watch the stars, you know, and out over Wellers Bay, and I've got a, there's a street light that's less than 30 feet from my, where, where I would sit, and there is absolutely, I would say, no interference with the, with the sky above it, none. They are, they're, they're pointed down, they're very focused, the light is, they're many times less intrusive than, than the old original streetlights. That's just my personal opinion. And I do sit out on my step and watch the dark sky, and those lights have, in my opinion, really have no, no impact at all. So, and I, I agree, right, that trying to change them all out is maybe in the, in the urban areas is maybe not such a great idea, but I'm just saying that those really don't affect my viewing.
Great, thank you. Councillor McNaughton for final words?
Thank you. I was actually, I think part of my thunder's been stolen. I was going to mention that there is a lot of municipal experience in Ontario with dark sky policies, but for, and, and I would also like to agree with Councillor Maynard, 30 or 40 feet away from my kitchen door, we have one of the new lights, and it's appropriately shaded and focused downward and prevented from... and prevented from casting too far, and was an improvement for our home over the incandescence or whatever it was before, I think halogen, I don't know, whatever it was before then, they were pretty bright, and I was really happy when a neighbor, I think, broke the light, maybe on purpose, I'm not sure, no accusations. But I would just want to comment on one of councillor Harrison's concerns about adding layering, or layering new planning policy impacts. So we already actually have, in our development guidelines attached to the official plan, we've got EIS mitigation measures that have to be covered off in every environmental impact study, and that it does include lighting. It often does get ignored in our environmental impact studies that we receive at planning committee, or ones that we've seen some don't. And it has recommendations already in there that require or suggest lighting mitigation. So that is already sort of covered off in the development framework. So I don't think there's a lot of hazard there. I'd love to see what the options are coming forward regarding the preserve, but as well potentially easy policy options that we can do to ensure that people are aware of how to mitigate their impact on the natural world. Thanks.
That's great. So there is a motion on the floor, so I'm gonna, councillor Pennell?
I guess my concern as we move ahead is we're coming through the most difficult time this fall, preparing for a budget and everything, and to add one more thing to staff at this time, I think is ridiculous. I would prefer, if the motion was going to go through, that the movers of it would consider that within, by the third quarter of 2026, if we're going to ask for a report to get it back, but not right now. Otherwise, I will not support it.
Okay, I'm seeing, councillor St Jean, final words?
Not going to elaborate, I just have a question for staff. In the report, again, through you, Madam Chair, to staff, in the report, can we please include the numbers of municipally-owned streetlight fixtures in the area that is potentially going to be designated? I think that's important information that we should know, given some of the context of some of the conversations that's been going on. Yeah, yeah, intersection lights, streetlights, whatever. I would like to ensure that all of the information comes back in this report whenever it comes back. And I do look forward to the report, and I will support getting a report. I just have many reservations at this point.
It's like, no more comments. Anyways, but we have a recorded vote. Clerk? Anyways, on the amendment to the motion, we have a recorded ver- recorded vote. Clerk, would you like to-
I would like the motion read once more, please.
Me too. A little lost.
Through you, Madam Chair, the motion reads that staff be directed to explore opportunities to support a dark sky preserve and report back with recommendations for the steps and actions required.
Yeah, with no date specified.
I will now call the recorded vote. Councillor Harrison?
Opposed.
Councillor Pennell?
Opposed.
Councillor Brandhorst?
In favor.
Councillor Engelstorfer?
In favor.
Councillor Hirsch?
In favor.
Councillor McNaughton?
In favor.
Councillor Maynard?
In favor.
Councillor Grossel?
In favor.
Councillor Nyman?
Opposed.
Councillor Prinsen?
Opposed.
Councillor Roberts?
In favor.
Councillor St Jean?
In favor.
Mayor Ferguson?
In favor.
That's nine in favor for opposed motion carries.
Excellent, thank you for that. And on that note, this is now a closed topic, so let's move on to 4.2. This is a statutory deputation slash public meeting for the closing, declaring surplus and conveying portion of a road allowance, of road allowances within the Nicholas Street Development pursuant to the county road policy. Can I have a mover or a seconder, and a mover and a seconder, to put this motion on the floor, please? Councillor St Jean and councillor Harrison?
Okay, take a moment. So this is, who's my seconder again? Councillor Harrison?
Sorry.
I think that that motion that's listed would come following any deputations. At this point in the meeting, you would be calling for any deputations on it. If there are any, we'll receive them, and then we'll adjourn.
Right, sorry, thank you. Is there any deputations today on the Nicholas Street road closing? I'm seeing none, great, so I'm going to close. Now it's councillor St Jean, that the public meeting held on October 9th, 2025 for the road closing, be adjourned. Sorry, would you like to read it? Because I didn't read it all.
Read the entirety of the motion as it's printed on the agenda, okay.
Just 4.2.
Yeah, okay. So St Jean Harrison motion that the public meeting held on October 9th, 2025 for the closing, declaring surplus and conveying portion of road allowances within Nicholas Street Development, adjourn at 1:56 PM.
Thank you for that. All those in favor? That carries. Moving on, comments from the audience. Do we have any comments from the audience on any items that we, come on up, yes?
Is that report this afternoon?
No, we have consolidation of core-
Asset management.
Yes, asset management, we are.
Okay, the Cultural Heritage Master Plan is part of that?
Uh, no, no. This is our hard, core assets are our hard assets and fiscal assets and non-core assets.
It's my understanding that the list of assets, part of them come from the Cultural Heritage Master Plan?
I'm seeing a headache from our CAO. Would that, okay. Would you, yeah, do your comments anyways, and then maybe there's some crossover, so can you just state your name and-
Okay, my name is John Lyons, I'm a proud native of Wapoos. I'm here today to formally request the county direct that Palin's Bridge in Wapoos be added to the Cultural Heritage Master Plan. Now, I've been through all the documentation that the county and the consultants have produced online, looking for mention of Palin's Bridge, I'm not finding it anywhere. Now, this structure is nationally significant, so it needs to be added. For those of you who don't know, thousands of cars every year drive over Palin's Bridge, and they don't even know it's there because you can't see it from the road. It is 200 feet long, it spans the valley floor of the Wapoos Creek, and when it was built, it was using the dry stone method, which is still there, which makes it extremely rare. And the fact that it's 200 feet long, currently, the one bridge that is claiming the title for the longest dry stone bridge in Canada is in Perth, and it's 186 feet long, and it was only built a couple decades ago. So Palin's Bridge beats that by a, I was out there last Sunday, hopefully to take a couple of photographs, but the bridge was covered in vines and weeds. So I went back on Monday and cleared about a 30-foot swath, this is on the west side at the, on the end of the northern abutment. Now, technically and legally, the abutments that lead up to the bridge are part of the bridge, they have to be counted as part. Dry stones there. Now, I have been doing some research on the bridge for quite a while. Online, I found a 1908 postcard color of the stone bridge over Wapoos Creek and Connors Mill Pond. Now, in the picture, sitting on the bank, are two ladies in Victorian dresses, which also kind of helps, but you can see the entire length of the bridge, not just the span.
I would just like to let you know you have 20 seconds left?
Okay. I have one last piece of documentation. I was able to find it in the county archives, March 26, 1896, Pickton Gazette, county council meeting minutes, they moved $100 to be expanded from the hills of Pierce's Corners to Palin's Bridge in the township of North Marysburg. So it was legally in part of the road system in 1896. Now, because it's dry stone construction, it's my belief that the age of the bridge goes back much farther than that. I would say early 1800 somewhere, but I don't have any documentation of the exact date of the construction.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's dry stone construction, that's what was common then.
Okay, thank you for that. You are out of time, sorry to cut you off, but we do have a lot of things on this meeting. I do have the CAO's hand up first, so I want to go to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention that we did have our open house for the Cultural Heritage Master Plan on Monday, and I do have Mr Lyons's email, must have corresponded on other things, maybe bridges.
I was there.
So I can put you in touch with our planning department, who can take all of your information and direct it toward that process, we'd be happy to do so.
Okay, I think that's the most appropriate pathway forward. I would like to say thank you for bringing it up. I know bridges kind of land in the asset management plan, and this is also landing on cultural heritage, so it is appropriate to bring it up, but also I do think directing it to cultural heritage. Is this on a question about how it's related to the asset management plan? Sure, let's take questions.
I just wanted to be polite and to thank you for bringing this forward. At first, I thought it was Sarah Palin's Bridge to Nowhere in Alaska from 2008, but this is really interesting to me, and I hope that, I hope that something significant comes of your presence here today. Thank you.
The bridge definitely needs to have some money spent on it, because it's, there are some maintenance problems with it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Steve Ferguson?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Very briefly, thank you, John, for bringing this up, but as the CAO said, I think it's appropriate to talk to the planning department, WSP made the presentation, the public presentation the other night, because they were quite open about coming forward with additional, you know, areas and sites that should be included in the plan, and this certainly sounds like it qualifies, so I think follow that direction. Let's get it on there. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor McNaughton?
Thank you, yes, just briefly, there are engineers in the room listening, who might really be inspired by this incredibly long-lasting infrastructure, and there seem to be a few old roads and cart roads in North Marysburg with some amazing dry stone construction. I would love to know exactly where to go to look for this, because I have never, ever noticed it as I've driven over it.
The walls are pretty steep, so you need to go onto private property to see it from the side.
So should I get my councillor to broker a tour?
I have permission from the owners to go on, so if you'd like a tour of it, I'd be happy to take it.
I would love that, thank you.
Perfect, thank you, and thank you for your comment. Is there any other comments from the audience? I'm seeing none, let's, can I have a motion to accept the comments from the audience? Councillor Nyman, Mayor Ferguson? All in favor? That carries. Moving on, we to section 6.1, Report of Community Services Programs and Initiatives Department dated October 9th, 2025 Regarding an Exchange Agreement with Nicholas Street Homes Limited. Can I have a mover and a seconder to put this on the floor? Councillor St Jean, good on ya, and councillor McNaughton?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. St Jean McNaughton motion that report CSP 23, 2025 regarding the exchange agreement with Nicholas Street Homes Limited be received. The council closed, declared surplus, and conveyed to Nicholas Street Homes Limited a portion of Cumberland Street being part 747R XXXX, being part of PIN 55065-0267LT, and the council authorized the transfer of a portion of Cumberland Street being part 747R XXXX, being part of PIN 55065-0267LT to Nicholas Street Homes Limited, and the council closed a portion of Cumberland Street being part 647R XXXX, being part of PIN 55065-0267LT to be retained for public access to Dalhuy Park. And the council closed, declared surplus, and conveyed to Nicholas Street Homes Limited a portion of David Street being part 1047RXXX, being all of PIN 55063-0335R, and the council authorized the transfer of a portion of David Street being part 1047RXXX, being all of PIN 55065-0335R to Nicholas Street Homes Limited, and the council resolved to declare a portion of municipal land described as part 947RXXX, being part of PIN 55065-0146R as surplus to the needs of the municipality for the purpose of conveyance to Nicholas Street Homes Limited. And the council authorized the transfer of a portion of surplus municipal land described as part 947RXXX, being part of PIN 55065-0146R to Nicholas Street Homes Limited, and the council authorized the acceptance of a parcel of land described as part 147RXXX, being all of PIN 55065-0323LT from Nicholas Street Homes Limited, and the council authorized the acceptance of a parcel of land described as part 347RXXX, being all of PIN 55065-0322LT from Nicholas Street Homes Limited, and the council authorized the acceptance of a parcel of land described as part 547RXXX, being part of PIN 55065-0264LT from Nicholas Street Homes Limited. And the council authorized the acceptance of a parcel of land described as part 847RXXX, being part of PIN 55065-0227LT from Nicholas Street Homes Limited, and the council bring forward a bylaw to authorize the land exchange agreement between the Corporation of the County Prince Edward and Nicholas Street Homes Limited, with the lands identified on the draft reference plan 47RXXX, subject to confirmation and final legal description upon the deposit of the reference plan at the next feasible council meeting.
Fantastic, that was great. One more time, on corporate performance. Director, any comments on this file, or just straight to questions? Director, any comments on this file or just straight to questions? CAO?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can, can break this down. There are basically three components here. My understanding is when the developer came forward through the various land use approvals, there was a, he mentioned to essentially give the lands abutting the Picton wastewater plant to us, so that's the one item here. The other item relates to the proposed trail to Delhi Park, so the, it's a bit of a swap there. And then the third piece is a reference to the David Street, which the, as the developer was preparing their reference plan in advance of being able to finalize their site plan, realized that they, there was a road allowance of ours that we were unaware of and they were unaware of within their holdings. So the other issue is to stop that up and convey that to them for the purposes of their holdings, so they can complete their site plan activities.
Excellent. Counselor Nyman? Counselor Hirsch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I don't know if I can ask this, but I'm going to. So with this here, how close are they to starting to get shovels in the ground? Because, you know, we have a lot of developments here, but nobody's doing anything. So we just want to, before we start approving more, just want to know that people's doing something.
Madam Chair, through you to Counselor Nyman, I think, maybe I would have been the holdup on this, because this is sort of a housing department initiative we were working with them on. So as soon as this gets ratified and the, the plan, the reference plan they have into the registry office is deposited, they can finalize their site plan. They are concerned about the timelines and they are ready to go. They have their CMHC funding secured, I believe. So this will be the last piece before they can complete their site plan approval. So my understanding is that construction will be imminent upon all of these things being finalized.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With all due appreciation to Counselor St. Jean's reading of the texts, I just wanted to say to Emily that the, the pictures and the diagrams are what made it for me. That really tells us the story. So thanks to Grace, probably, for putting all that together.
Counselor St. Jean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yeah, and, and I raised this only because I did get a call from a resident asking about what's the deal with the land swap. And essentially, it's, the municipality gets roughly 60,000 square feet of land in exchange for 15,000 square feet of land, and one of them being an unopened road allowance, which is essentially useless to the municipality. So, but I, I wanted that clear so that if there is anybody listening and watching, that this is definitely to the benefit of the community and, in particular, Delhi Park. So, thank you.
Counselor McNaughton?
Thank you. And also, just for the benefit of those who might have been concerned, because I did have one question. We don't lose, aside from a couple of meters, we're really not losing any territory or access to Delhi, and that was the key concern from the very few people who I've spoken to about this. Delhi Park is fully preserved, except for those few meters, and the access route is also going to be preserved perpetu-, forever. Thanks.
Great. Thank you for that clarification, Pictons. Great. Yeah. I'm seeing no other hands. Let's call a vote for this. All those in favor? That carries. Fantastic. Moving on to, moving on to 6.2, Report of the Fire Department dated October 9, 2025, Regarding the Fire Department Radio Communication System. Can I have a mover and a seconder to put this on the floor? Counselor Harrison and Counselor Pennell?
Okay, this is a Harrison Pennell motion. The report FD 01, 2025, regarding the Fire Department Radio Communication System be received. That's, number two, that staff be directed to include $75,000 in the proposed 2026 operating budget to procure a managed radio communication system. Number three, that staff be directed to include $50,000 in the proposed 2026 capital budget to construct a new 70-foot radio communication system tower.
Great. Thank you for that. And interim fire chief, it is great to have you around the table, so, and I think first time around the table in your new position, so congratulations. Thank you. CAO, I saw your hand shoot up again.
My apologies, Madam, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make sure before interim fire chief Kramer makes his comments and takes questions, that what this is, is in the interest of having an efficient budget process in December, this item is, this is intended for us to have the conversation about the merits of this particular project. So there's, we're not requesting any money from council today. This, these recommendations are a referral to the budget, and we can have the discussion about whether or not to approve the monetary component at that time. This is about the project itself.
Excellent. Thank you for that point of clarification. It's very helpful. Interim fire chief, would you like to take it over?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee members. My report regarding the Fire Department Radio Communication System has been prepared to inform you of the purpose of the fire radio communication system and to communicate the need for critical upgrades and to improve performance and reliability. Radio system is a critical component of public safety and serves two important functions, which include the task of summoning a fire department response and to equip emergency services personnel with a dedicated and reliable network to communicate in real time using equipment that is purpose-built for use during emergency response operations. The firefighter's need for a reliable radio system is comparable to the need for water to suppress a fire or the need for breathing air to support life when operating in a hazardous environment. A working radio system is a critical need to successfully complete assigned tasks and is a firefighter's lifeline while working in an environment that is immediately dangerous to life and health. In 2023, Prince Edward County Fire hired a service provider to inspect and assess the radio system after numerous failures and repeated complaints from the fire personnel about poor performance and the discovery of system faults when fire personnel attempted to use the radio system. The assessment included a thorough inspection of the entire system and testing to identify system deficiencies. The analysis identified several weaknesses and opportunities to improve the system performance and provide recommendations to implement proactive strategies to maximize system uptime and reliability. Since the time of the system analysis, the department has worked with the IT department to overcome challenges and has successfully implemented a recommendation to implement the use of vehicle repeaters. Vehicle repeaters have provided firefighters with the ability to communicate clearly and to communicate using a portable radio in areas of the municipality and environments where it was one-time possible to do so. The success of this recommendation has proven that the vendor provided the corporation an effective solution. Unfortunately, the vendor's assessment of the radio system revealed the radio tower equipment has become obsolete and is no longer supported by the manufacturer. Sudden failure of this equipment would severely reduce the functionality of the system and eliminate all system redundancy. Continued reliance upon the existing system is no longer sustainable and places the organization at risk of being unable to deliver critical services and jeopardizes the health and safety of our firefighters. Recommendation has been made to replace tower equipment, including stationary repeaters, simulcasting equipment, and construction of a new radio tower and dedicated backhaul network to isolate the fire radio communication network from the corporate communications network. This recommendation would include modern, would introduce modern equipment that would improve system performance and equip the system with critical features, including remote proactive monitoring, increased channels, and redundancy that would minimize the possibility of a total system failure. The final recommendation includes the implementation of contracted services from a service provider who can provide proactive monitoring, preventative maintenance, and a service level agreement for emergency repairs. Implementation of this recommendation would maximize system uptime and minimize the possibility of service disruption. In closing, the recommendations of this report provide the corporation with a solution to implement urgently needed improvements that protect worker health and safety, improve service delivery, minimize risk to the organization, maintain infrastructure in a state of readiness, and minimize upfront capital investment.
Great. Thank you so much. Counselor Pennell?
Yeah, I, I guess my question would be, where are we looking at putting a tower? And have we pursued other options?
Through the chair to Counselor Pennell, the tower we're looking to install is actually to replace an existing tower at the Rosmore Fire Station. So in 2016, the radio system was originally installed in the municipality, and then in 2018, there was an additional upgrade to a tower in Rosmore. In order to implement the changes that are recommended in the report, we would need to expand that tower at the Rosmore site, so that's where the need for the new tower would come.
The reason why I asked the question, going back 2018, if I remember properly, we were told we were going to be using a tower in Trenton, not Belleville. So even at that time, council wasn't even made aware. I thought it was still in Trenton.
Through the chair to Counselor Pennell, that is correct. There is a tower in Quinney West, which we lease space from through the municipality of Quinney West, and the tower that I'm looking to replace is located at the Rosmore Fire Station. And then there are additional towers located in the municipality to support the infrastructure.
Can I have one more quick follow-up? Has there been a look in the village of Marysburg on Prince Edward County land as a tower? Now, and I'm wondering, have we asked the question, could we attach to that? The Whitney Hill is the tallest point in Prince Edward County, and I'm thinking, would it not make sense to at least look at the possibility of putting that in, knowing full well that we, as a municipality, are leasing the land to them to have that tower? Perhaps it might be a little something that we could get back and return, save $70,000.
Through the chair to Counselor Pennell, that's an excellent question. These options were explored. When the vendor completed the assessment, there were options explored, including the use of the Constance Con Water Tower, and that would take us off of the Peleona Tower in Quinney West. And there was also an option explored to install a new tower at the Marysburg Operation Center, and that would eliminate the need for a tower at the Rosmore Fire Station.
So are we still looking at this point?
This is a possibility.
Okay, so this is all pie in the sky for that portion of it. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that. And let's move on to Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks for this report, Tim. If I'm understanding this correctly, this is going to a managed service contract rather than us buying a whole bunch of equipment, and then you're coming back to us 10 years later saying that that's not working either. So this makes perfect sense to me, and this, this type of technology, we're not experts in radios and, and transmission equipment and towers. So pay $75,000 a year and they make sure that it's all working. Makes perfect sense to me if that's, if I'm understanding this correctly.
Through the chair to Counselor Hirsch, to answer your question, that is correct. So we would be entering into agreement to procure services to install the upgraded system and manage it throughout its entire lifecycle. This would ensure that we have a specialized carrier managing the system, so if something does happen, they're actively aware of it through proactive monitoring and responding through a service level agreement to ensure that the system is in operating at all times.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Grosso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question. Can these radio communications work off satellite systems and not towers?
Through the chair to Counselor Grosso, I'm not aware of any fire department or emergency services that are operating off a satellite-type system.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Nyman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a couple of questions. My understanding is, is this equipment's nine years old, is my understanding, and I guess, you know, to say that it's outdated or you can't get any more parts, you know, and I take you at your word. Don't, don't take this the wrong way, but it just, you know, I'm finding that hard to believe that there's no parts out there for, for something that's nine, nine years old, when we can find parts for things that are 100 years old, you know? And I guess other, other fire departments, what are they using? And then, you know, we're using the tower in Trenton, which I think, as Counselor Pennell said, I think we have spots in the county where we don't have to, that we can utilize and maybe get rid of some of the towers that are there that we don't need and saves that cost. So just a couple, if you can answer those.
Through the chair to Counselor Nyman, to first answer your question about the, the current status of the equipment in its terms of being obsolete, the vendor that completed the assessment is a dealer for components that were identified as being obsolete and have confirmed that the, the product is no longer supported by the manufacturer and advised us that if one of the system components failed, specifically the ones that are obsolete, in order to repair that system, we would have to take components from other parts of the radio system that we currently own. That would allow us to repair those failed components. Unfortunately, what that does is eliminates the, any redundancy in the system, so we would lose one operating channel. So we presently have two operating channels. So we'd be left with one channel to page and communicate on. It's never ideal to have only one means of communicating on. There's times where not only do we have to page, but we may have two or more incidents on the go at one time, or we have to sector off communications into different channels. And through this, the solution, we would lose all that redundancy and ability to operate as we currently do. The recommendation to replace the repeaters would, would allow us to make use of modern technology and what's known as digital mobile radio communication technology. So it's like a hybrid system where you're making use of analog components and digital components. The benefits of going with the digital hybrid model is that we would receive actual access to additional radio channels. So if there's ever a need for more than two channels, our existing two channels would be multiplied to four channels.
I have a quick follow-up. And I think I read in the report where, where we're having problems with multiple users on the radios, but I guess, you know, and that's common problem, doesn't matter what radio was out there, I guess. So I'm just kind of wondering, how is this going to solve that problem? Because I, I know it exists not only here, but, you know, and I think what happens is when people's using the radio and somebody else is on it, then they just wait until they're, they're able to get on it. So just want to understand that.
Sure. So, and that's where the benefit of moving to a hybrid model system allows us to access additional channels. As you can imagine, when we're operating an emergency scene, time is of the essence for everything. Seconds matter, minutes matter, and having to wait to relay information to another responder or to fire dispatch impedes the ability to successfully complete the task at hand. You had one other question regarding towers and our ability to move off of towers. There is a possibility of moving off the towers that we lease space from. However, that would require us to, to fund capital investment in, in building a new tower that's for exclusive use by the corporation. So there, there are sites to do that that have been identified. However, unfortunately, it does come with a capital investment.
Round two? Okay, if you want to respond to that one, but if you have any follow, like any more questions, then let's move to round two.
And I hear what you're saying, but what I, what I was alluding to is our own spots where we have towers, such as water towers, and we have a few around, plus, as Counselor Pennell said, there's, you know, some of the spots where we know we have the, the infrastructure there that we could utilize and get rid of the ones that, as you alluded to, that it needs repair or whatever the problem is there to, to eliminate that. It's not to get off of all of them and build a new one. That's not what I'm asking. So.
Okay. To answer that question, we could, there is a potential to move off of one of the leased towers and move on to one of our water towers. It would still require a capital investment of at least, a construction of at least one new tower, but there is a long-term savings.
Great. Thank you for that. And thank you. Counselor St. Jean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Tim, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Tim, for bringing this forward. I guess I've got two questions. I'm going to try to squeeze them into one. The current tower height, the current tower, how high is it? And what else is on it?
Through the Chair to Counselor St. Jean, the existing tower is approximately 40 feet. It is a lightweight tower in terms of, in the sense that we can't add any additional equipment that's required under the recommendations of the report. The increased height to 70 feet would also improve coverage for this surrounding area. So that would improve pager performance and also allow us to install the equipment that's required to be installed.
Okay. And I said it was a two parter. Given, given the recommendation is to go to a tower that's 70 feet as opposed to 45, is there opportunity to rent out space on it to generate revenue? Or does it have to be solely for the use of fire services?
Through the Chair to Counselor St. Jean, to answer your question, it is possible to enter an agreement to allow space to other users. We have to factor in the need that we may have to procure a system that's or a tower that's capable of carrying the additional loads. And then we would be responsible for enabling service agreements, which would require users to provide us with all the information about the equipment they want to hang. We would have to prove that through an engineered analysis. The other thing to consider is that hanging additional equipment on the the tower has the possibility of interfering with our system. The recommendations of this report seek to isolate our system from any reliance upon corporate network and interference from other communication systems.
Okay, great. Thank you. That that helps me to understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Maynard.
Thank you. Thank you for the, thank you for the report. I just, so will we still, sorry, I did read the report, but will we still use the our existing pagers or radios?
Through the Chair, Counselor Maynard, yes, we would. We would use existing radios and pagers.
Okay, so they're they're not a problem. They will integrate fine with.
Absolutely. There's a lot of the system will be reused. This includes towers, antennas, cabling. What we're looking to replace is some of the the core infrastructure of the tower itself. That is namely the the stationary repeaters.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison.
Yes, I guess it's more a comment than anything to the Fire Chief and the C A O that I think in future, we're running into this all the time more in business, that there be some sort of procurement for parts guarantee when we give these these tenders out, or however we go about it, procurements, because it seems that where we used to do business places stock parts, now they get parts from often one supplier only. And if they don't have it, we're a little luck. So I think there's, we got to start looking at some guarantees for down the road service on some of these things.
Through the Chair to Counselor Harrison, to in follow up to your comments, through a competitive process, I would be seeking a product that is widely supported and a reputable product and avoid any specialized sort of niche market.
Great. Thank you for that. We're moving on to round two, starting with Counselor Nyman.
Thank you. It's a quick question. So you mentioned about, we got two channels now, and we could get more channels. So I guess, I'm not 100% sure, but I'm thinking if you're getting more channels, you're paying more. So the cost goes up too. So is that correct? I mean, you don't know that now because you haven't got the system, but I'm just, I guess I'm assuming.
Chair to Counselor Nyman, there is a possibility that there could be additional costs for additional channels. It is a, it is a small part of the the service. We wouldn't immediately be looking to enable those channels, but it is, it is an option that could be used in the future if needed. It basically, it comes with the the technology.
Counselor Pennell.
How many times has our president's system let us down?
Through the Chair to Counselor Pennell, I can think of at least six times in the last several years.
Yeah.
Where we've experienced critical failures and lost system redundancy and had to adjust service levels, which has impacted our ability for us to operate within hazardous environments.
And one more quick question. Would it be possible long before budget time, that we could get some answers back on some of the questions regarding towers? Can we, like for instance, the one in the middle, utilize that? And I guess the other question to answer, with a new tower, do we need Trenton anymore? And I don't need the answer now, but I think as we move ahead, we've got to know, be able to deal apples versus oranges.
In follow up, through the Chair to Counselor Pennell, in follow up to your comments, I am confident in saying that I can explore those options immediately. Through the work that we did with the assessment, the vendor is is able to provide what's known as a propagation study and identify where there's opportunities to place towers. And that information can be obtained quite quickly.
Great. Thank you for that. I'm seeing no more hands. So let's put the the motions already on the floor. I'm going to call a vote. All in favor. That carries. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 6.3, report of the Corporate and Legislative Services Department dated October 9, 2025, regarding the 2026 fees and charges by law. Can I have a mover and a secondary to put this on the floor, please? Counselor Prinsen. Wow, all the hands. Counselor Maynard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a Prinsen, Maynard motion that report CLS-32-2025 regarding the 2026 fees and charges by law be received, two, that the proposed 2026 fees and charges schedules as set in attachment one be approved, and that, three, the 2026 fees and charges by law be brought forward for enactment at the next feasible council meeting.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Director, would you like to any preamble or straight into questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you to the rest of council. Just very briefly, it's my pleasure to bring this report forward to you this afternoon. This is not a report that you're unused to seeing. You see it at least once a year around this time as staff prepare to bring a budget forward. And so these proposed changes to the fees and charges by law have been, this is a collaborative effort among staff. They are, we have staff present from all departments available either present in the audience or on Zoom if you have any specific questions about changes to any of the specific schedules. And then, as I said, we bring this forward around this time in preparation for the budget. So whatever fees and charges are approved today will be incorporated in the budget that comes forward in December.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that. So any council members looking to speak to a specific director must call Red Rover. Red Rover, we call a director over and answer the question. Starting with Counselor Harrison.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. One, one thing that jumped out at me, looking at this, is community hall rentals. And this, the community halls are very important in most of our municipalities. And particularly where we have often recreation committees volunteering to do these jobs, I, I would not support a 25% increase. That I think the hall rentals should stay where they are.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. I believe Mr. Westervelt is, could speak to that.
I could speak to that. Sorry.
Oh, sorry, that's Mr. Gilbert.
So with the 25% increase that we were looking at was the material costs, the cleaning supplies, and the fuel and the equipment to get out there, and the equipment that we were looking at. So we were just trying to not necessarily make costing, cost recovery. It was just more or less to try to keep up to the demands that the expenses that were occurring.
Okay, thank you. Going to Counselor Prinsen, and then I have Hirschen up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wondering about the smoke and carbon monoxide alarms for STAs. So I would, I see like last year, it was 300. It's both in yellow. So I'm just trying to look for clarity. If they're a business, I don't know why we're giving it to them. So.
Through the Chair to Counselor, this fee was eliminated, and we're consolidating the the fee to one single fee of $100 per alarm, no matter whether it's an STA or privately owned property.
So I don't know how to change that, but I'm thinking if it's a privately owned property or an STA as a business, they should be separate. So what's what's the logic behind consolidating them, I guess? I'll give you the opportunity to convince me otherwise.
If I could defer this question to Sarah.
Yes, thank you. And through Madam Chair to you, Counselor Prinsen, the fees and charges by law is essentially meant to, and the authority for the municipalities to collect fees and charges are essentially for the cost of the service that's provided. So whether you are operating as a commercial capacity or a residential capacity, the cost to provide that smoke alarm, if it's not there, is the same. Adding a higher fee for a, because it's an STA, is punitive and does not belong in the fees and charges by law. That's not to say there can't be punitive charges imposed on commercial entities that are not in compliance with laws, but that's through a different process. And I have spoken with interim chief Kramer about establishing some administrative monetary penalties for things like this that are either violations of the fire code or violations of our bylaws to have that, to get at that piece of it, that this is a commercial operation, not just a residence.
So quick follow up. And when do you foresee those coming forward to us? Because I have a huge issue with it evidently. Like I, it does just makes absolutely no sense to me. And so I just, if you've looked, talked to the chief about these fees coming forward, when do you see that happening? Because I have a hard time changing it here and then bringing them in three years.
I, so interim chief Kramer and I haven't spoken in terms of a timeline of bringing forward some administrative monetary penalties. But we, we've started those discussions. And the short term accommodation by law is also on my list of bylaws that need some attention, and that is further to a council motion. So that's another opportunity because the requirement to comply with the fire code is in the short term accommodation by law. So there's, that's another avenue that we can encourage compliance.
We could discuss this all day, but I'll stop. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Prinsen. Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Coming back to Counselor Harrison's question about the the rents on the halls, it seems to me that because of Schedule T, which provides free rental for individuals, groups, organizations renting the space for community good at no cost participants, that covers an awful lot of the use of the of the town halls. Do we have, Sarah, I don't know if you have this information, maybe Emily does. No, she's saying no. Sir, what percentage of use of town halls is actually free under Schedule T?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I don't have that information. I'm not sure if Mr. Gilbert, if they collect statistics on how many rentals are in kind rentals?
I don't have the exact number offhand. Jane, Jane or Leasest Department could definitely provide that. But I would say a large percentage of our rentals are are free of charge to the community. It would be your one off birthday party, retirement, stuff like that would be included in those fees.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to Counselor Pennell.
Something that can affect the price of halls and rentals. We, we started in the county, putting in locks on the halls that you could open by telephone. And I think it's important to know where we stand on that, because I know in Amelia'sburg, for us, they'd have somebody drive from Milford to come unlock the door, then come back to make sure everything's all right. The next day, I would imagine. And just a tremendous cost for something useless if we had locks on all the halls. And I'm not certain whether we do yet. I know a couple of them.
So through you to the Chair to Rob, I can answer that one. The door systems are now installed, and we do not have custodians going out to every booking. They are going out after bookings to clean. So the doors are on system. So they unlock an automatic lock at the end of bookings. And depending on the type of bookings, like a yoga class back to back would not see a custodian service in there, only when you'd have a bigger event or at the end of the night. So saving cost.
And just as a quick follow up, is there any kind of way of telling us how much money we've saved by those locks? We know they're expensive to put on, but it'd be nice to know, when you spend money, how much do you save? We never get a report on that.
Maybe something in the, oh, sorry. Would you like to comment? Yes.
We are, we are going to be able to gather that in the, what we're able to do in labor, but we'll have to wait till the end of the year to know the savings we have. I can tell you right now that we have been able to save a substantial amount of labor in the last six to eight months with this program in place. And we will be able to put that in, after we have a year to date, we'll be able to bring that forward if requested.
Right. I think that request is in there. So if we can hear that number at a later date, that would be great. Thank you for saying that. Counselor Maynard.
Thank you. Well, I do notice when I, when I check our comparators, that actually our park and hall rentals are well, well below our, our neighbors to the, to the north, significantly on some of the park ones. The ball diamond rates are, are a little higher. I have been in touch with the various users of the of the ball diamond, and they, you know, they're okay with a small increase, but don't want to see it to, you know, continue. Just for an example, because ours includes lights, but typically that's only one, you know, one game or half of a game, depending on the, you know, when the sun sets in the season. But at $30 per game compared to to Belleville with with lights, and I would say, you know, better facilities is like $21, $21 a game. Quinty West is comparable, but they have, they supply all the equipment and do all the the setup. Because we currently do our, they do their own lining in the diamonds here in the county. So they grudgingly accept this increase, but many of them do play in those surrounding areas. So they, they just want to make sure that we know that this is not going to be an ongoing thing. Yeah, like in Tindanega, which has good diamonds, $50, $50 a night, where our games typically two games a night. So, you know, we're, we're on the high side in that particular area. And I think we're on the low side on our, on our hall and park rentals, significantly lower.
Okay, thank you for that comment. I'm looking around. I'm seeing no other hands. Counselor Engels Dorfer.
I just have a quick one on the fees and charges for park rental. There's add ons now, like electricity, garbage picnic tables. Will rec committees have to pay those as well when they're hosting events in in the park?
Through, through the Chair to Counselor Engels Dorfer, it is my understanding that no, the rec committees do not pay. This is for like general public for rentals. And the way like And the way, like the way we have it set now is when you rent it, it includes access to the playground, four picnic tables, two garbage cans. And you can, the additionals are anything, like you pay for what you need. It's kind of how we've laid it out on this one now.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Harrison?
Yes, if this is appropriate timing to get a secondary, I'd like to amend the motion to strike that 25% increase on hall rental.
I'm looking for a secondar. Counselor Nyman? Okay. Yep. Counselor Maynard to speak to it?
Hall rentals, so that is because recreation or not-for-profits are already getting it at that discounted or almost no, as long as they advertise it and there's no profit being made, then they're already getting it for free, I believe. So that, that encompasses a lot of the users. It's, if you want to rent a hall to get married in, this is a bargain. So I can't, I mean, they still have to, there's still cleaning fees and stuff. So we're well below the market rate on the, on the halls and on the parks. And it's only, that's only for-profit rentals typically. If, if I can just have that confirmed. I think anybody that's a not-for-profit and that open to the public is, is free.
Okay, I'm thinking in our, with our particular hall, it's getting quite a bit of usage for celebrations of life, some weddings, things like community events. Because my ward particularly is quite an insular ward in the sense that it's water all the way around it except on the one side. And people tend to gravitate toward that hall. Mapus is a very central place for activities like this that you may not get in a lot of your other halls. And I'd just like to see it kept as reasonably accessible, whether it be for-profit or not-for-profit, as it can be and competitive.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Nyman?
Thank you. So, and this is just for the town halls, I believe. So I'm, is that, that's, yes. So just, can you explain to me again why the 25% increase? For the town halls?
Through the chair. To, to explain the 25% increase, there hasn't been a real increase in the town halls in many years. And due to the fact of the chemicals and the cleaning supplies required in the equipment and the maintenance of that equipment, the vacuum cleaners and such. And now that we've transitioned to a van, van system where actually we have custodians going out every day when these halls are booked to clean them, instead of having the door system where they went out post and pre-booking, we've now consolidated that in. So we've changed the formula where we've saved, saved in places and there's costs and others. But the main, the main driving factor of the 25% is we haven't really increased fees in quite a while. And the supplies and materials and maintenance fees have definitely risen in the last five years.
Thanks for the explanation, but I'm not sure who can maybe answer this. But it seems to me it wasn't very long ago that we had a big discussion on town halls because there was going to be a big increase to all users. And I'm thinking it was maybe in the last four years, maybe. And that, we ended up having an increase at that time. But I, so I don't know if anybody is here that can explain or kind of comment on that. But I just know there was an increase at that time because there was a lot of pushback from users of the hall at that time. And recreation committees were going to get nailed with big hits and everything else. So we have had that discussion. So I'm just kind of, 25% seems a little high.
If I may, through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Nyman. I probably don't have a fulsome answer on that. And I don't know if Mr. Gilbert has anything to add. But I, what I do understand is when that discussion happened, that's when the in-kind schedule came in so that the, and to, to qualify to have the use of municipal space in-kind, you have to be a community event. You're not charging, it's open to the public. So there are certain criteria that you have to fit. And as long as you fit into that, then you can have the space. Because I guess our rec committees were, the county was giving them money to run programming and then they were ending up having to spend some of that money to pay the rental fee. So I think that's where it came out of. And I don't believe there were any increases to the fees at that time. And then just to sort of put the 25% into context. So as the current fee, for example, for a nonprofit community group or service per hour is under Schedule P was, is currently $10. So the increase would be to $12.50. So just to put it in some context. But as I said, Mr. Gilbert may have some more information on, in terms of your question about the history.
Again, through, through the chair. The incorrect in that statement that the user groups that are the volunteer groups and it's non-for-profit that are using it for community bases and inviting all the community, this would not apply to them. It would only be the private events and the events that would, you know, look to have a sale or some type of income out of the, out of the use. So we're not looking to take the halls away and charge more for people that are using it for community events. It's more or less to try to recoup some costs through the privatization of the hall for private events and/or, you know, profitable events.
And I would just like to use my purview as chair. I do believe there's been leniency from the Parks Department, especially with groups like, for example, the WI, who may be doing an event for a fundraiser. So that is a paid event. But I have heard that because the money is all going back into the community and they're fundraising for the community, I have heard some leniencies have been given in those instances. So just context to add. Counselor Pennell?
It's more of an observation than a question. Every year comes budget time and we start looking at halls and that. And the biggest question always asked is, are they used? How much are they being used? Is it generating money? Well, I'm thoroughly convinced, the more we put the prices up, definitely that's going to probably put the usage down. Do we want these halls being used for communities? Or do we want to discourage? And as soon as you raise the prices, I think the tendency is have them go someplace else so they can find another spot cheaper. And if we're going to have the halls, I would sooner see them busy because you got to heat them all year round and that. Why not have somebody in there that's putting money towards it? So just offer for what it's worth.
Okay, final comment to Counselor McNodan?
Yeah, I just, I'm not so, I'm just not clear what people are upset about with the rate hikes for private use for our public halls. And I think it's actually really good because it allows us to, like, I know in, at the Picton Town Hall, usership has gone up by community groups that can access it for free. So our community, our community groups get complete free access. And we did do that, thank you Brad, for the reminder, we did that a few years ago when we were looking at rate hikes and we said, no, these are our public buildings. They belong to the community. They belong to community members. Let's, let's give them complete access. Staff came back and said, okay, so for community groups that are conducting, conducting events of public interest where a public has free access, then, then great. So we do already have a really great scenario to boost usership of the halls. I think it is working. It certainly is in Picton. And like, I think it's really good. I think what's being proposed is so for those private rentals where, where the hall is take, is no longer accessible to the public, that we, we get that little bit extra to help offset, to help offset the costs of our very public, community-based uses. So I think I'm really happy with, with what I see. I think a little bit extra for those private events. You know, if I'm going to have my kid's birthday, this, I'm past those years. I don't do kids' birthdays anymore in my home. But if I was going to rent something for my kid's birthday party, this couldn't be more affordable. There's nowhere else in the community probably where you can get that unless you go to, yeah, I don't know if there's anywhere more affordable. I think it's, this is perfect. Like, I think it's really good. And, and I would thank staff for continued commitment to free access for community groups. Because our, our rec committee certainly values having free access to our halls.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Counselor Maynard?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for, for your indulgence. And I think it has been said, the tall, I see our town hall being used more and it is because there's more people that can use it for, for free, basically. So we have to offset that a little bit. And, and again, I'm going to, because we like to compare ourselves. And if you want to rent the Parkdale Center, Community Center, which is a small venue, is, for a day, is $221. And if you want to use the town, the former town hall in Thurlow, the Jerry Masterson Center, is, on the weekends, is $402.50 plus HST. So I mean, we have to find some ways to have at least some cost recovery on, on these town halls, especially when we're, when we're allowing the majority of the use to be at no cost.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call a vote on Counselor Harrison's amending motion. That was to cut the 25% or to extenuate from the proposed fees and charges. Can I call a vote? All in favor? So this is to cut the 25% for clarity? Yeah, that fails. Main motion as amended, or sorry, nope, 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 nope. Main motion not as amended, as written in the report. All in favor? That carries. Excellent. There will be some counselors leaving and I think this is a great time to go on a 10-minute break. There will be some councillors leaving, and I think this is a great time to go on a 10-minute break. Okay, great. We got enough. So 6.4, Report of Finance and IT Department dated October 9, 2025, Regarding the Final Asset Management Plan, Consolidated Core and Noncore Assets. Can I have a mover and a second to put this on the floor? Uh, Counselor Hirsch and Counselor McNauton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the Hirsch-McNauton motion that report F I N 18 2025, Regarding the Final Asset Management Plan for Consolidated Core and Noncore Assets Be Received. That council adopt the final consolidated asset management plan, available as attachment one to this report, in accordance with Ontario Regulation 58817. That council endorse the establishment of a staff asset management working group to provide ongoing oversight, guidance, and monitoring the asset management plan, and that staff be directed to incorporate the asset management plan into the annual capital and operating budget processes to ensure that future investment decisions are aligned with the approved service levels, lifecycle strategies, and financial sustainability, and that staff be directed to provide annual progress reporting on the implementation of the asset management plan, and to bring forward an updated plan at least once every five years, in accordance with Ontario Regulation 58817.
Director McNichol, I'm going to give you the floor because this has been months in the making to get here.
Through Madam Chair, to members of the committee. Yes, a few years. So I don't think I can really quantify how excited I am, really, to to bring forward the asset management plan to the council. It has been about, well, really, we've been working on it since I got here. It was about four years. And last night, while I was watching the the baseball game, I sat down and I started writing down the the individuals that have been part of this and what they did. And and it's, this is what I have. Like, it's it's absolutely incredible how many people have been involved, directly and indirectly, with the creation of this asset management plan. And when I said to the clerk right before the meeting, should I, should I read out each individual? And she said, read the room and maybe do it at the end. So anyway, so so there are a lot, I guess. So I want to really thank staff. I guess that's the that's the main thing. And and council for support, as well as the C A O. And Adam has, or interim C A O, Goheen, has seen it from three different lenses. One as a as an operation director, affordable housing, and now as the interim C A O. So so a big, big thanks to to staff. I guess first I want to stress that the asset management plan really is a is a living document. Each year, as we collect more data, we get more condition on the data, we collect more information on our assets. The plan is going to be updated. It's only going to get stronger and stronger. So this is just providing the foundation of the plan. Legislation does require us to report annually and do a full update every five years, as mentioned in the in the motion. And this will give council an opportunity to review progress, incorporate new changes, and adjust priorities as needed. So again, by July 1, there will be a report. It'll be on the service levels, and it will be on any additions to the asset management plan that we we choose to to bring forward to council for approval. This is tax-based, it's not rate-based, so it's tax-supported. And the water wastewater portion of the rate-based asset management plan will be coming forward. We're going to be working on that this fall, as well as bringing that forward sometime in the first quarter of next year. Just go just briefly through how we got to this point over the last four years. Is it started with, I believe it was February of 2022, when we came up with a revised strategic asset management plan policy. We strengthened it in a number of areas. Two specific areas are climate adaptation and mitigation, with the intent of tying that directly to the Climate Action Plan that's currently, we're currently working on, and tying it into all the other master plans that we have. In 2022, July 1, we we brought forward a asset management plan for the core assets. And immediately after that, we started two streams. The first stream was working on just the asset management plan proper, with staff working on that. And underneath that, we were actually working on a lot of the modeling. So doing all the background work with certain staff to create the information needed for the asset management plan. So we had two scenarios, really, for the last couple of years carrying forward. After that, we created the noncore asset management plan, and that was brought forward July 1 of 2024, and was approved by council. We went through a number of service level workshops, which were a chance for council to review some of the service levels and the costs associated with them that are going to go into the plan. And and here we have a consolidated plan with both the core and the noncore assets. What the plan tells us, and I'll just go through some of the highlights. We have $1.3 billion worth of assets. That does not include water and wastewater rate-based assets, which is really incredible when you think about it. That's just a a huge amount of assets to manage. Over the next 10 years, we face $587 million in lifecycle costs, which is an average of $58.7 million per year. With existing sustainable funding, there's roughly a $24.2 million infrastructure deficit or gap. The plan to close this gap by 2035, the tax levy will have to increase year over year, compounding at 7.3%, growing from $54 million to $109 million in 2035. Basically, the capital portion of the levy would rise from $8.1 million in 2025 to $52 million in 2035. And if you look at it as a percentage of capital related to overall expenditures, you're looking at about 15% of our expenditures go to capital, and the rest are operating. You move to 2035, if you look at the graph at the end of the asset management plan, you're looking at close to a 50-50 split in spending. So the way the plan is forecasting is we would be, on every dollar spent, roughly 50 cents on the dollar would be going towards operating, 50 cents would be going towards capital. And and talking with the consultant, Peterson Cisco from Watson, he's seeing that similar split with a lot of the other clients that they have, which sort of is truthing the plan. I just wanted to, I guess, remind, I guess, the public and council that the these figures are not tax increases. They're illustrative only. The taxes are set through the budget process. This is a a plan, a working plan that can be changed at the time of the budget, and it can be changed July 1 during the legislative requirements, and it can be changed at the five-year cycle as well. So so council will decide how much to fund, how much to defer, and balance priorities. And these, the asset management plan is a roadmap, really, to get you from point A to point B. And then the budget is what actually sets the rates. It does have some illustrations within it in terms of what the tax percent it would increase will cost the ratepayer year over year. There are two different charts, one at 5.4%, and then there's one at 7.3%. But again, this is illustrative only, and we'll have to wait till the actual budget is is approved before we can calculate what the true impact is. The overall asset management plan uses reserves and reserves funds transfers to capital. It leverages transfers like OCIF and CCBF, which is the former federal gas tax fund. It does only consider debt for the new long-term care build. So in the financial strategy, as it is now, there is no debt built into it for future years. It's a pay-as-you-go philosophy. And the rationale behind that was that we weren't really sure where we were going to land with some of the the larger water wastewater projects and some of the other projects that are currently on the books. So at this stage of the game, it's pay-as-you-go. And then we're going to include debt and growth and some other items as we move forward with the plan, strengthening the plan and building on that. And then some of the projects where, as council is aware, are prioritized through multivariate prioritization. We're using Brightly Predictor, sitting on top of G I S, to prioritize the the roads assets as decision support. It still needs to be truthed by the actual staff on the field, but it does all the heavy lifting for us. And then we also went through a pro, through the building condition assessment and the multivariate prioritization exercise there as well, that's built into the plan. And that also separates the different capital items within facilities that need to be prioritized over the next 10 years. So the next steps, I guess the first step is to integrate it into the 2026 budget process. And I'll just briefly explain how we'll operationalize this for the budget is. As it stands now, the asset management plan recommends $3 million of being built in the 2026 budget for capital projects. And what, basically what I've done is I have prorated the lifecycle management activities for each asset class. And actually, I did that last night while I was watching the game. And then, and so I prorated the the amount, the $3 million, by asset class. And then those amounts will be additions to transfers to capitals from the operating budget to the capital budget when we get to that stage. So you'll see an increase, for example, transfer to capital for transportation or for roads, that will increase by, I think it's 72.57%. So there will be amount. And that's where council will have the option of of decreasing the transfers to capital reserves. And the actual capital items are based on capital plans that we have. So we'll have our transfers from operating to capital reserves. And then we now have our capital plans for each asset class, which will be built into the budget. And that'll give opportunity for council to see the assets, as well as the transfers that are going from capital or from operating in the capital. So there will be plenty of opportunity during the budget process to have a discussion about both of those particular items. The other item that we'll be working on this fall is the technical modeling. Now that we provided council passes the asset management plan, we will have the funding envelope designated for the roads. Then we can start to package the underground infrastructure with the actual roads, and we can do that this fall. And what that will do is provide the foundation for the water wastewater rate study that is required, basically, the first quarter of next year, and then the financial plan, which is also a legislative requirement, either June or July of next year. So a lot of the, what we're doing is laying the groundwork for future, for future different plans. And they should also tie into some of the other master plans that will either be created within the next year and further years. And then the other idea, item is to update development charge background study, which we're currently working on. So the asset management plan as it stands does not include growth-related assets. So when we're done the D C background study, we can start to incorporate the growth-related assets. So really, at the end of next year and the next update, you'll see an asset management plan that will have growth-related assets, our existing assets, as well as our water wastewater assets. And you'll have a much more comprehensive plan than what you'll see here, much more updated plan. And then it will also tie directly into some of the other plans that will be developed next year. The other item I'll quickly mention is the establishing an asset management working group, I guess you could say, made up of the department, similar to what we had with the the Green Task Force, which was climate-related. And this way, we can start to build processes in order to, for example, update our our G I S system. There's a number of processes that we'll have to set up and procedures to ensure that this, the asset management plan is up to date and fresh in the G I S when we're doing our modeling every single year. So it's really a living document. Now, we have to look at it as such, and it's just going to require a fair bit of work. And and I'm sort of looking, I'm looking forward to the next chapter of of the asset management plan. It's taken a lot of work to to get here. But I think it does set the stage for informed, long-term decisions about, really, the services that the community relies on. And with that, thank you.
Erin, I think you were the first person that says, "The plan is done, but I'm excited because it means it's more work in the future." So I I love that. But thank you for that great detailed overview. I really think it's important when we're having, coming to a close of the conversation that we need to have it. So thank you for that background and and detail sharing. I will, I have Counselor McNauton, Counselor Maynard, and Counselor Hirsch in that order.
Thank you. Erin, thank you for this extraordinary project that you embarked upon many years ago. And you're now starting to see the picture become more complete. And we are too. And I just wanted to thank you for your efforts and all of staff's efforts to educate us on this for the last half year. It's been a real struggle with the information because it is very heavy information, and we carry a lot of weight in this plan. And understanding it is, I think, going to help us move forward with those challenging decisions as we budget in future years. So I thank you for that. I also thank you for the education about, over the past half year, about how the asset management plan lives and breathes with assets when they outperform or underperform expectations. I think that's going to be really interesting to see how that evolves. And let's hope for overperformance, because wouldn't that be nice? The the flip side is very expensive always. But we've just, we've heard about a hun, you know, a 150-year-old bridge just today. So you never know. That would be great. And but I really want to, and I will get to a question about next steps. But I really, really want to thank you as for the education, but especially the what looks like a very collaborative approach. When this all began, when we started seeing it mandated by the province and that there would be deadlines, graduated deadlines, it was one commissioner behind a closed door in a room with a bunch of consultants and no information. And you've opened the door on that, the all of staff working together. And it looks like there's some department or interdepartmental municipal-wide education that's going on, and also information exchange. And one of the things that I think a number of us have been looking for for a long time is to be seeing those silos open and joined together to make one big stable instead of a bunch of silos. And I see this as part of a really concerted effort to do cross-corporation collaboration. It's really wonderful. And and the educational aspect, I don't think it's just councillors. I think it's all of us who are working in, on this team. We're all part of the same, we're all, you know, trying to row the boat in the same direction. And I really appreciate all of that work and your enthusiasm and excitement to to move forward as Counselor Brenda Horst has brought up, like, thank you for being excited by this. My, I am looking at the next steps piece, which, and you do talk, and you know I'm going to ask about the Climate Action Plan and how that gets rolled in. I I think we're going to be sort of seeing that. I think we're going to be sort of seeing that happen over the next several months, hopefully, knock on wood. I guess that's real wood there. What does that look like regarding, does that, like, how does that touch the, how would a climate action plan touch on the asset management plan? Is there anything that you can contextualize now or do we just not know yet?
Through madam chair to councillor McNaughton. No, I think so. I think there's both, I mean, the Oreg speaks to both mitigation as well as adaptation. And I think with whether or not it's more frequent ice storms and whether or not it's additional heat and whether or not it's building infrastructure differently with a different cost associated with it. And I know the original intent was to bring forward a climate action plan almost at the same time at the asset management plan was completed and tie them two directly together. But there are definitely asset implication and lifecycle costs associated with climate change. And I believe there, when I, when I left CLS, we were getting fairly close to the point with a number of projects where we could start to see some of the linkages where rather than have it as a footnote in our asset management plan, we could actually have a direct dovetail or a direct integration. So I think it would affect some of the assets as well as some of the new assets as well as when we purchase assets, what we're actually purchasing. So.
Thank you.
Great, thank you councillor Maynard.
Thank you. I won't reiterate some of the compliments, but I have a quick question and then just a few little verb after that. So this is based on the asset management plan that was already approved by council and is provincially mandated. There's not, I didn't see any significant changes in the consolidation in what it's in front of us.
Yes, that's absolutely right. Yes, so the 2022 core asset management plan was updated and we had additional updates from staff. So that was consolidated with the non-core asset management plan that was passed July of 2024. So there were less updates needed on the the non-core asset management plan. All of these were regulated and then again, we're regulated or legislated to bring forward updates by July 1 of each year and then on the fifth year to have a comprehensive update of the plan.
Okay. I'll just say, this is certainly a sobering reality that the current situation that we're in with very little or no reserves and a rather significant asset deficit. I'll just say that I look forward to the budget and just to see us start moving forward in a more responsible fashion because I don't believe that we can continue to fund our assets renewal through through debt. I mean, we've pretty much played that game out anyways and it's, it's just a, it's just a reality that we are now faced with and have to and have to deal with. And in your personal life, right, you can only use your credit card so long and the interest on those, those credit card payments are staggering and you just go further into the hole. So I'm hoping that this is a chance for this council to to be proactive and forward-thinking for for the next generation because this is where you're making generational decisions in changing how we deal with our with our asset planning.
Thank you. And moving on to councillor Hirsch.
Thank you, madam chair. And thank you for for your report, Erin. Actually, I go back farther than four years on asset management. I go back to 2019 when councillor McNaughton and I were attending the FCM conference in Quebec City, as it were, and there was a special seminar on asset management, which we attended and came out of that thinking, wow, that's what we need to do and talk to people back here. And 2025, here we are. So I just want to read a kind of a general statement here. I'm not as good off the cuff as councillor Roberts is, so I had to write this down. This has taken a huge staff effort and I must add that the work done by Watsons pulling all this together has been exemplary. Peterson Cisco really impressed me, working closely with staff and he spent the day with us on August 28 detailing their work. As a result, we're at a watershed kind of moment where we have the opportunity as a municipality to put a complete asset management plan in place to set the county up for future success. We have struggled for years trying mandated fixes to our infrastructure with really not much success. We know loud and clear from our constituents what they think of the state of our infrastructure, mostly roads. So now we have the opportunity to put a really good plan in place, one which will see our road conditions improve from a 65 PSI average to 83, reduce our facility's footprint by 25% while improving the condition of the remaining facilities, extend our fleet lifecycle by 25% and improve and maintain our parks assets. But of course, this all comes at a cost. And as councillor Maynard said, we don't have the money in the bank, so we're going to have to collect some. The financial plan outlined here wisely, in my view, proposes a 10-year phase in of the investment needed to succeed. Based on today's dollars, taxpayers will likely see each year of 5.45% increase on their property taxes for capital projects. That's for the next 10 years as we play catch-up after years of underinvestment. Of course, we will be taking advantage of whatever grant opportunities present themselves, but that's, that's kind of an unknown at this point. I think it's really important to understand that the county's tax rate is currently significantly lower than all of our neighboring municipalities on an equal assessment basis and lower than almost all of our comparator municipalities. All this data was well documented in the August 28 documents. That's a real eye-opener. Our taxes are low and unfortunately, we're getting what we pay for. So we have the choice today to become a modern, well-functioning municipality that will attract business and new residents or continue the decline of our infrastructure. My choice is clear. We must move forward with this asset management plan. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hirsch. Councillor Grosso.
Thank you, madam chair. So we're talking, or you mentioned the number of 7.3% compounded on taxes. So, and I'm just using this number off the top of my head, wink, wink. If someone's paying $13,000 per year in property taxes, based on 7.3%, then using my grade nine math, over 10 years, on the 10th year, that 13,000 will be now 24 and a half thousand. That's staggering. It's crazy when you think about that in those, in those terms. I'm just going to leave it at that.
Councillor Pennell.
I don't know whether Erin wanted to answer his question before I asked.
Sorry, I didn't really think that was a question. So director.
Through madam chair to to councillor Grosso. So the 7.3% is like a, the 5.4 is a net levy increase, levy over levy. The 7.3% is levy over levy. So that, so that's not a 7.3 or a 5.4% increase on your residential taxes. That is on the overall levy that's calculated to raise a certain amount of money in the budget. So there's sort of, I can certainly talk to you offline for sure. They're separate, they're separate things.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for that. Now I, I will make a phone call to you tomorrow.
Thank you for that. That's a great question councillor Grosso, and I think a lot of people would appreciate that clarification that you put in. So thank you director for making it and waving your hand at me. Councillor Pennell.
Yeah, for starters, I keep getting peed off at the fact that people keep saying, well, our taxes are not high enough or everybody around us. We are Prince Edward County with very few people compared to the others. So there's taxes are going to be higher, I know, in Prince, but we can't look at it because we think we might have a little cheaper tax. We got to look at the county itself. But in looking at your plan, and I certainly appreciate it, I believe there's some areas like replacement of fire halls and that. I don't think we could possibly replace the fire halls for 14.2 million when we look at what Picton cost a few years ago and the Concon. So some of those things I think goes along. It's going to have to be adjusted. But I think you might make a good farmer, Erin, because a farmer has to look when he moves ahead. What is received serves are, which is, we've got to depend on that if we're going to have money to spend because otherwise the taxes would be going 25, 30% every year. But also further to that, a farmer would look at it as he moves ahead. If he doesn't have the money in the bank, he's not going to spend it. He's not going to replace new tractors if he can't afford it. So I think to a lot, as we move ahead, it's our right to have a plan, but if we're not committed as a council, as staff of yourself, to make those hard decisions, then we can have all the plans in the world and we either break the county or 50% of the people move out because they can't afford it. And that's free equity. And I, I think it's great to have all the plans in the world, but my goodness, it still comes down, if you don't need it, you don't buy it. That's the way a farmer operates. If you can afford it, yeah, fine. Maybe you have to go a year and you don't buy any new equipment. But that's reality. But we can ask the people themselves and you start compounding that and look at everything else, the way it's going up around us, we're going to lose everybody pretty well that's lived in the county for some years because they're not going to be able to live here. I think we got to start thinking outside of the box and it looks like you're prepared to do that and I look forward to that because the same old, same old is not going to work in the future to keep saying, well, people don't pay enough tax or the other statement, you know, people want to pay more tax. I'd like to see those people that want to pay more tax and say, oh, life is so easy in the county. I think we're going to lose in the future people even move into the county because they've saved their money. They didn't get it by throwing it out the window. So I think we got to be cautious, but I do look forward to where you're headed. Thanks.
Okay, councillor Saint Jean.
Thank you, madam chair. I wasn't aware I was next up or on deck. So I'm not going to reiterate, yeah, not going to reiterate all of the praise that's been heaped on you, other than say, I completely 100% concur with everything that's been said. The amount of work that's gone into this over the many years, the many, many staff that have been involved with getting us to this point where we actually have a plan that we can move forward with. Sitting still is not, not an option. We all know that. Planning one year at a time, that that went out the window 10 years ago. I am so thankful that we are now thinking 10 years ahead. We are planning ahead. There are always going to be tweaks, there are always going to be adjustments and we get that opportunity at budget time to look at the 10-year plan, see how it is fit, how it is working and how we are going to adjust and whether that means service cuts, whether that means deferring payments, whether, you know, this is where creative financing over the long term is extremely important. And I am so thankful we are finally here because the reality is we can't continue. Councillor Pennell, you're right, we can't continue the way we are. We have to be proactive, we need to be forward-thinking. And councillor Hirsch didn't actually mention the number, but and we are the 13th lowest property taxes in all of Ontario. And it's always been our goal here as a community, 00000. I think the reality of the real world has finally come up and slapped us in the face. We can't think like that anymore. We have to think about the future. We have to think about doing things better, more financially sound. And I think we're on that path. I really, really want to thank you all for that. I do have a question. And that, and I believe it was councillor Hirsch, mentioned it, about a 25% reduction in facilities. That is going to be extremely difficult. I think we all recognize that. That's a pretty big hit. And I know we started a process of that, you know, we all remember the bus trip, looking at all of our facilities. And I think I've asked this question before and I'm hoping that maybe we can get a more clear answer, more directed maybe at the CAO. When are we going to finally start making decisions about that? We have some buildings, there are operations buildings that are, they're, they're not worth reinvesting in and it's time to dispose of them. You know, councillor Brainy's not here today, but I'm sure he would be saying a very much similar thing. It's time to start getting rid of these excess, less useful properties. How are we going to do that? And when are we going to start, more importantly?
Yeah, madam chair and through you. So we, this work has, and the final output from the consultant has informed what the, what the, what the ultimate picture of the assets is with respect to facilities. But, and I can't give you a timeline for that body of work just yet. I do look forward to having that conversation with council and the community. But the first one that we intend to bring forward is the Wellington Town Hall project that was subject of an EOI to seek potential opportunities for its divestment for other uses. So I think that'll be the first conversation that's coming fairly soon and we'll see how that conversation goes before we have the broader conversation about what the 25% reduction in floor plans that's accommodated in this plan could look like.
Okay, thank you. I know that's going to be rather contentious with the public in some instances, but we have to do it. So anyways, thank you. Thank you, madam chair.
Thank you. Councillor Harrison and councillor Roberts.
Thank you, madam chair. I recognize there's been a tremendous amount of work going into this and, but I liken it to the old saying of best-laid plans of mice and man. And it's a so-called living document and I'm afraid that the times we're in are not as easy to predict as they might have been four or five years ago. There's no question about that. So how we maintain being nimble in our requests is very definitely front and center for me. Now, it's easy to make comparisons, like we have the 13th lowest taxes in Ontario. But when we look at the vital signs report, we also have the third highest food insecurity. So that tells me that our demographics very definitely have to play heavily into these decisions because I don't think the wealth is out there in the community. We're watching mushroom plant close. We've just, just heard about our largest and only feedlot in the county closing in Wellington. And these, these aren't good signs. Now, we have some positive things like Picton terminals, things like that, that are going to help pick up the slack. There's no doubt about it and maybe even improve on it. But we can't compare ourselves in every respect with other municipalities. We're unique and the ability to move with the situation, the balls as they're thrown the pitches is very, very important, I think, in trying to make this, this document work. And I think that's got to be really recognized by everybody around this table. So I know that's about all I've got to say and I do appreciate all the work you've put into it. And I think it's a good plan if our environment stayed steady, but that's one of the worries, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Roberts.
Thank you, madam chair. I really hear councillor.
I really hear Counsel Harrison on that one. Well, there's a good chance that the guy in the White House will get us all killed before 10 years, so we're going to have to deal with it. And I hope, Aaron, that you, now that you've done this excellent work, you can find some other way of being excited in your life. I have some suggestions offline. More seriously, this is an excellent piece of work. And what hasn't necessarily been mentioned yet is your leadership in attaining that excellent piece of work. Yes, other people are involved, worked hard, dedicated, committed, but it was your leadership. And I greatly appreciate that. I don't want to out-age Counselor Hirsch, although I'm sure the feelings are reciprocal. But I remember in 2014 remarking that the only, my first term, the only true asset management plan the county had, when I asked about that, was in the fire department. That was the only one. And it was like I was talking, you know, a foreign language. And now you've done it, and you've done it with excellence, with determination, and sometimes with some good humor, which is always nice. So thank you for that. I do not want to conflate asset management good work with our operations reality. But in this discussion, we've heard service levels mentioned, we've mentioned, heard tax rates mentioned, we've, and the opportunity, the opportunity of having the Director of Finance and IT and this acting interim, who knows, CAO, present in the same room. I think it's an opportunity to pursue that a little bit. Whether it's 7.3% or 5.1% on property taxes, it's still a pretty big increase for all the reasons that Counselor Harrison mentioned. There are pretty dire statistics out there about what is the reality of our community. And yet, your department sits here and tells us that we have IT and AI, and we're going to get more efficient and effective and lower costs, and things are going to be better for us, which is really encouraging, although the other aspects of AI we might not be that happy with. But even in this document, you talk about at least four or five places about, you know, reports on service levels, which is great, we have reports on service levels. But another reality is, at this moment, we have Canadian municipalities, big ones, small ones, medium ones, saying they can't tax their residents anymore. Whether it's 0%, 4.25%, we just can't go there. It cannot be borne by the community. So maybe something happened while I was away. I know I've had this conversation in snippets with our acting CAO, but when are we going to be able to integrate all of this good work with our operations budget and either stabilize that budget or have a timetable for reducing that operations budget because of other efficiencies and technologies? Because the population cannot bear the load. And I totally appreciate that we need to land on service levels before we can get to that discussion about reduction of operating costs, which at the moment, it may get to 50/50 one day, but at the moment, it's a big, puddle-doodle part of the pie chart. So that's my question. When is that going to happen? And is it going to happen before we get into the 2026 budget discussions?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, I believe you were unable to be here on Tuesday when we had the conversation about Counsel Pennell's motion. And I think through that conversation, we were talking about the 2026 budget process and the format of it being the working session where I'm fully expecting, and Treasurer may agree, some pretty frank conversations about the services we're providing and the cost for them. So we can really have a frank conversation about whether we need to focus or refocus on core versus discretionary or all the sorts of things. So we are not planning on having the conversation before. I mean, we're working feverishly on preparing those budgets, and there's quite a bit of work that goes into them in terms of preparing a status quo budget for you. But we're really hoping to have some pretty detailed conversations about all the different services we provide and how much they cost, so that council, you know, we can have a really frank and open conversation about where we want to go as a municipality with the operating budget.
A little rejoinder. That's great. And I'm glad we rehearsed this before we reconvened. Aaron, you were watching the ballgame last night. Phil and I were probably flipping back and forth between the ballgame and the Canadians. Right, okay. But one of the things that Coach Schneider said before, two games ago, was, this is no time for feelings. No time for feelings. This is about the team winning. So we have things, we don't need to talk about them now, but we have things that simply aren't working. They're not producing the outcome that they're supposed to produce, and they cost us a lot. And we need to wrestle with that. We're past feelings, we're into reality. So I hope we have that discussion.
Through Madam Chair, to members of the committee, and then I also was, when I was watching the ballgame, and they asked Coach Schneider how they managed to turn around being under 20 games versus the Yankees last year to actually beating the Yankees this year. And he said one thing, we had a plan, right? Any plan is better than, any plan's better than no plan. So I just thought I'd throw that in there.
Mayor Ferguson.
You win. That was terrific. Talk about off the cuff. That was terrific. Like others, I won't repeat the congressional remarks about this, putting this plan together. It's an extraordinary document. The report's terrific, as I mentioned to you earlier today. It really paints a compelling picture of the status of our infrastructure and the, I think it's fair to say, the, for whatever reasons, in the past, the neglect that we, as this council, are addressing through this, through the document. Certainly mindful of the Counsel Harrison's remarks echoed by Counsel Roberts, and the need, the compelling need in the community, and the lack of resources people have. And I heard about some of that last night at an event I attended. But the document goes into so much detail about the status of our assets, and I'm hopeful that the public will read and understand what we, as a community, have to grapple The 10-year, 10-year plan is going to involve three councils, Council of 2026, Council of 2031, and the Council of 2035. How is this going to move from this council's, hopefully, support into those other, after other elections going forward, to ensure that the plan remains, as you call it, the plan? Any ideas, any thought been put into that at this point?
Through Madam Chair, to the mayor, absolutely. Well, we'll follow the way I'm looking at it once we get a committee set up and we start to foster a stronger culture within the corporation with regards to asset management. We've got our legislative dates and guidelines that we need to follow. And then I think keeping our asset management plan up to date. So if we, we've got our 10-year capital plan. In some cases, the capital plan will go further than 10 years. If items get moved through the budget process from one year to the next, it's really just keeping this alive and well, keeping our GIS system up to date. It's really just setting up processes within the corporation to ensure this document is every year changes, and those changes are reported to council, and to the next council, and to the next council. And it's really just communication and the willingness of staff. And based on what I've seen, staff have really, really bought into the process. I know our CAO is very excited seeing something come through to fruition. We've had that discussion a number of times, and like I said, all of staff that I've talked to, they're really enjoying the process here and moving on to the next stage, which will be refining this asset management plan further and further and further. This is a great foundation that we've built, but there's much work to be done. And I think it's just keeping it alive through a set process and procedures, and through legislation, and through communication with the upcoming councils, and it's just, and getting buy-in with staff and that particular council. I think from my perspective, that's what should happen. I don't know if the CAO has anything else further to add.
But he's as excited as you are.
I can confirm, oh, sorry, I was just going to confirm that I did not watch the game with my spreadsheets, like the Treasurer did.
Okay. But it will be a balancing act for a number of years, weighing the needs, the concerns, the worries of the community, because the last thing we want is what Counselor Pennell suggested, the migration of people out of here because they can't afford it. But it's, by the same token, we've, we have to attend to these infrastructure failures, but being mindful of the importance of our, those that make Prince Edward County what it is. But congratulations on the work, and congratulations to all the staff. And for the format of those meetings we had where everybody was on these first names, it was loose and convivial, and we got an awful lot done. And hopefully, we talked a bit about this on Tuesday, and having same kind of, well, not exactly the same, but loose dialogue about where we go with the budget. So thank you again, congratulations. And Counsel Robert was spot on, you really led this. And between you and the staff and the CAO did a tremendous job just on this remarkable document. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And going on to round two, Counsel Hirsch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mayor Ferguson, that was a good segue to what I wanted to say anyway, in responding to Counsel Harrison's concern, and Roberts, and Pennell's, and so on, about affordability. Clearly, this is expensive, and affordability is an issue. But let's all remember, we already, we have developed a very good and effective tax relief plan in the county, which is well-subscribed every year. And I can imagine that council going forward, as we look at the increases we approve, will probably continue to modify that plan so that more people, or the right people, qualify for it. And that should, that should hopefully make it affordable. Thank you.
Great. Counselor McNaughton.
I was pretty much coming here to say something similar to that. The relief program is something that has, that takes an investment from the municipality that is less than late payments and interest payments on bills, both tax bills and ratepayers, being late paying their water bills, because people who live at a lower income pay a much higher premium on life. So being able to envision it in a way that we can always be observing it, where that balance is, and protecting the most vulnerable in our community, and understanding that one of our key jobs is to prevent homelessness or to prevent housing insecurity, I think, is something that staff have been having conversations about, and hopefully will, in perpetuity, as life becomes more challenging, as financing becomes more challenging, and certainly in a community with a lot of people who are aging and will be requiring some respect for their fixed incomes. I also, I kind of wanted to go back to 2019 at that asset management workshop, which was for CAOs, and I don't know how John and I got into it, but we were very lucky to be in that room. And there was a CAO who I think was from West Kelowna, and he spoke about the challenges of the electoral cycle and its impact on long-term planning, that, and I think this relates to budgets as well, which is when you hit hard times, you do, or when they're, with electoral, the electoral cycle is a challenge, because different, different members of council will be coming in fresh, and they'll have different ideas, and some will be interested in public investment, and some will be more interested in less public investment and more, more like, just sort of providing basics. And, and you've always got to be moving with the undulations of the electoral cycle. His take on it was, and I think this goes to Mayor Ferguson's point, with every budget, with every, with every new council, as long as you have good planning, you explain what the risks are when it comes time to make decisions, and the people who sit at the table and have a vote make those decisions. So what we do do is, when we come around to it, a new council will have an opportunity to vote on any increase that has to be considered, and it'll be staff's job at that time to say, here's the risk, here's the risk for the future. So if we don't repair this critical infrastructure, which is crumbling right now, what it's going to cost us in 40 years, in five years, or in 10 years, or in 40 years, what it's going to cost our children is going to be this much. So the, and that can involve, and that can still be the right decision. But what we're dealing with right now is generations of neglect for our critical infrastructure. And I am the lowest-income person at this table, I think, and I am one of those people. I don't want to pay more taxes, but I do want my community to be safe and funded properly as much as we can, and to be protecting people from extraordinary, extraordinary impacts to their life. I don't want my taxes to outstrip my ability to live properly or maintain my house or maintain my family. So it ain't easy, but the real world impacts, I don't think are lost on our staff. And I do believe, based on what I've heard from staff, and because I've been trying to have those conversations, I believe that there are going to be some, that there is going to be some consideration in, of particularly lower-income households, and we'll hear more about that later this fall. But, and I don't know when that might be, but I think it's part of the budget.
Counsel Maynard.
Thank you. Well, I was going to talk a little bit about the tax relief program. I would just request that when we go, when you are creating the operating budget, that we, that we leave ourselves enough room. And I think we have, from what I remember, we've had a surplus this year. So whether we try and have an operating reserve, so if one year is more, you know, is more difficult than another, that we have, that we have a decent buffer there, just a, just a suggestion. And, but, but I do want to respond to, like, people moving out of the county. We actually have the, in the area, we have the highest median income, and that doesn't mean that there's not those at the low end, but there's certainly plenty that are at the but there's certainly plenty that are at the high end. Ours, somewhere around $72,000. Bancroft, $52,000. Balfour, $66,000. So I don't know where else they're actually going to. And we actually do have the, in the entire region, we have the, by quite a margin, the lowest tax rate. Those ones that are lower than us are generally in really densely populated areas from about Markham and that area, or maybe a few small townships that have no, really have no infrastructure. So I think that, you know, we can find the way to pay. Nobody likes to pay more, but it's just a reality to be responsible with your finances is to not let yourself get into a huge hole that you can't dig yourself out of. So I look forward to seeing this and supporting the recommendations from the asset management plan in the upcoming budget.
Counsel Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that, I think that I'm more than 100% invested in how we deal with trying to mitigate as much as possible the harshness of reality for those that are vulnerable and marginalized in our community, whether it's Kate's Rest or food insecurity or a range of things and Prince Edward Learning Center. But my experience, for what it's worth, is that the unhoused, the food insecure, the single parent, usually a mom, working two or three part-time jobs and being a mom, while deeply grateful for our tax relief programs, food banks, learning centers, assistance with filling out income tax, all those things which are supports, not solutions, but supports, deeply grateful, that there's still something that nags away at being dependent on charity, dependent on handouts, stigma. It's not something that you hear expressed very often. It's usually a very personal moment because there is that gratitude. But I don't think many of us around this table live with that feeling. Oh, yes, there's a generosity of the community to help mitigate certain. I think what we should be looking, what I hope we're looking for at the end of the day is that we all live in dignity. We all live with a sense of self-reliance, personal resilience, and that we, as this council and this Shire Hall, have done something to achieve that. So, thanks.
Counsel Penal.
I think it's wonderful that we can help out for those that can't afford it. But we've got to look at the possibility, are we making the price that a lot more people, I suspect, depending as how the taxes go up here, we're going to be bigger amounts required because we are pricing the people out of the market? And the big thing I've learned from many years ago into politics, there's got to be a time when you consider a want versus a need. I'd love to have everything for free. It can't happen. So we've got to look at what we want, what our needs are. Your needs, you've got to look after. Wants, I think it's going to come a time, and probably this fall, that we've got to take a serious look. Can we get along without it?
Thank you, Counsel Penal. And at this, I'm going to use my comment, as I have not, but everybody else has, so strange, to close up. And I think it's very much on that. I think it's very much a summary of what we've heard today. And I think it leads to bigger conversations coming down the road of what must we pay for and what is nice to pay for? What is a core service and what's a support service? And I, spoiler alert, believe that our ICAO has plans coming down the pipeline for a, an overall service level study and wanting to know what is long-term planning. And I think that is the way that we do need to go in. Like, we can't keep going down this route. And I agree that we're going to have to really prioritize, like Counsel Penal said, needs, wants. And if our community wants to and is acknowledging and screaming out to us they do not want things to change, that's a lovely conversation to have at the time. I don't think we are there. But we have heard that our core needs need to be improved upon. Our core responsibilities need to be maintained. So future conversations to have, but I think today's discussion was fantastic. Can I have a vote now to, either opposed in favor as it is written? Okay, let's call a vote on favor. That carries. Fantastic. And now, because there's no Counsel Branderhorts to put the motion on, mover and secuder for this motion, Counsel St. Jean and Counsel Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. St. Jean Harrison motioned that this meeting now adjourn at 4:15 p.m.
Fantastic. All in favor, that carries. Great job.